All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our second March meeting of the Amherst School Board, a kind of an ad hoc meeting. It'll be our final meeting before Election Day, barring any more snow next week. Uh, this meeting was supposed to be our first with a new board member, at least one, potentially two. But instead, it will be our final meeting with the uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand three school board as is. So we'll get things started tonight. Uh, first calling order right at six o'clock tonight, and then we will take a look at uh, first session of public comment will be operating on Zoom tonight per usual. So if you are listening in virtually and you'd like to make a comment here during the public comment session, feel free to raise your virtual hands. I see somebody has already, nope, that's just Steve in the chat. Uh, raise a virtual hand, uh, turn on your camera, have your name in the uh, in the graphic there. And then you will have three minutes, but I will open it up here in the building first for public comment. Seeing none, I will open it up online. If there's anybody that has public comment they'd like to make tonight, please feel free to raise your hand.
Trying to figure that out.
All right. Seeing no public comment online tonight, we will have another session later on after the uh, the bulk of our meeting has completed. So we will move on to our consent agenda. We do have quite a bit on the agenda tonight, a lot of uh, little things, no major meaty topics to get into, but a lot of little things. So we'll continue to move right along. I will take a motion from the board to accept the consent agenda as it's prepared in our agenda tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Victoria and a second from Josh. Any discussion on the items in the consent agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing none, I will take a vote to pass it and to accept it uh, as presented. All in favor? One, two, three, four, 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 and none opposed. All right. Moving on now to our superintendent's report. Our superintendent is quite busy here. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Anything you'd like to touch on first before we uh, get into questions or anything that we had for you based on the board notes that you sent over?
Sure. Just uh, uh, for the, I put a little bit of a two-topic uh, superintendent report, just for a couple of timely topics that came up that has um, just come across my desk. Um, just to get the board an update, um, the, there's some um, financial support necessary for Ways and Means as there is a community member who submitted a right-to-know request to Ways and Means. Um, so we've met, um, had two meetings um, with some leadership of the Ways and Means. And um, to ensure that uh, the, the law was followed and if there's any questions about certain email, emails or certain procedures in the committee, they have asked for um, some financial support. And work with Tom and working with uh, with um, our attorneys, that is a responsibility of the Amherst School Board, Amherst School District. And so I have communicated, left messages um, that um, we are ready and willing to support, able to support this process. With legal advice, if so called on. Um, I've done uh, in my time, both in interim superintendent here, as well as my previous done a significant amount of time spent on right-to-know requests, happy to provide some help there and certainly support with some legal, legal advice if necessary. Um, so just wanted to update, that's unusual. It's the first time I think in talking with, with Amy, there's, there's really no history of supporting uh, this manner, the financial aspect of a Ways and Means Committee. But this has come across our desk and I just wanted to update the board.
There's a certain irony involved there, I believe, correct?
I suspect.
Josh? So, you know, the rights and no laws are pretty straightforward and clear. So what is it that we're trying to support or what are the questions that we're trying to answer that can't be answered either with a quick conversation with you? Or, you know, a quick conversation with legal advice?
Uh, and I, uh, I can only speak to, uh, they expressed a desire to ensure that they followed all regulations, all statutes, a due diligence with the process. Um, and I think it's suspect because this is new for them uh, in that piece. Um, the right, the right-to-know process, we, it's a public board. We know that the Ways and Means is a public board. It is dealing with public funds. It is appointed by an elected moderator uh, in a very public process. So all meetings have to be posted, all ninety-one A process has to be followed. Uh, I, I can't speak to what possibly could be the um, the, the, what is exempt from right-to-know is very similar to why we go into non-public. You know, those things has to be about reputation and has to be about other members in the board, right? You know, that's the stuff that we, every time we go into non-public, we do a roll call and we state the reason why. Um, those type of things. Uh, and I don't know um, beyond that. Part of the services that we provide in right-to-know is it's happened to me uh, i- i- is my role as interim where people have requested my emails. And then we do provide, we, we, um, the SAU as a service um, provides support for all the SAU thirty-nine emails. So our Director of Information Technologies has assembled and is ready to provide to the Ways and Means Committee all the emails as requested by the right-to-know. So they'll go through those. Um, the other, the other part of it was um, videos, which, you know, and we, with Tom and I, we've all been there. They've, they've done some Zoom stuff. And just the rather all the minute stuff, which is of course natural part of their position. So I can't speak to exactly, uh, except they've, they've had a, a strong desire to make sure they adhere to all regulations in RSA and make sure they do this correctly.
Victoria?
Um, we've talked about the cost of legal fees a lot this year. Do we have any idea of, you know, is this a one-hour type of legal fee that we're looking at? And in your opinion, would it be appropriate for this board to weigh in on the, the cost and the maximum spend from our district for this?
Sure. And, and um, and invite Ways and Means back. The, the, the statute says within five days, you have to acknowledge the receipt and, and give an estimate time of when you can complete it. We've done that. And so, and there is, they, they, they establish a window that would be necessary to review. There's a significant, to no surprise, um, Ways and Means started forming, I think in the spring-ish. And so the right-to-know was uh, emails, ten months worth of emails, a significant number of emails. So it depends on how the Ways and Means Committee um, i- is going to uh, add to, are they going to review the emails and only ask the ones that are in question? That may be in question, you know, following the, the statute? Or are they going to have uh, attorneys review every single email? That would be prohibitive. That costs, there, there's a significant number of emails. And I haven't, I haven't had the discussion about the process that they're using once they have the emails. This is really just an update to the board. It's unusual. Came across my desk. Wanted to make sure that um, we did our due diligence, but the responsibility and informed the board about a possible expenditure that is not typical. That was the goal. Just came across my desk, wanted to make sure this board is informed. Does that make sense?
It does. You had a follow, Victoria wanted to go.
You have a follow-up on that topic.
I'm, I'll let you go first, Josh.
Well, so I would say, you know, we may want to put in initial, some sort of cap and then bring it back to the future board down the line, should we meet that cap. Um, but that, I'll leave that up to the discussion of the board. The other thing I would say is I think it would make sense. Um, no matter who the moderator is, um, to work with that person to help them, help the future uh, Ways and Means Committees fully understand right-to-know so that we're not in this situation again. Um, you know, it's, again, I think it's pretty cut, cut and dry, as long as you, you know, when I came in, there was a quick training and it was like that was there. And I know NHSBA provides some of that stuff. So whether we give them access to it or give the moderator access or something, just so that we don't end up in this situation again.
I, I think with the right-to-know, you know, having Ways and Means, I think with any committee that you're, you're never going to understand it fully. So I don't know if, you know, training them in right-to-know will avoid this situation because there's still going to be um, information that folks will want, even if they've been above board, it's still going to be a lot of, you know, the volume of it. And then, you know, making sure that they're getting everything that they need to get in. So I, I don't know that that's as big a um, concern that would have prevented something like this. In terms of the legal fees, I, I had thought about this and, and while it's great, I think for us to put a cap on it and then say to come back and vote for the board, I'm not sure that we can do that because this is still a um, a participating committee of the district, whether they're elected or appointed, it doesn't really matter. So we can't go back and say, you know what, you've had your ten thousand, that's it, that's all we're going to do. I don't know that we have that. Um, I think the, the SAU or the district has to support this. Um, you know, as long as we know what those costs are, you can update us on it, Steve. I think that would be helpful. But I don't know that we have the right to say five thousand, stop, come back to us and ask for more. I don't know that we have the right to do that because I don't know that we control that part of the purse strings and I don't know that we control that part of Ways and Means to dictate how the district can support them. But I don't know.
I think that's how we've gotten in trouble publicly this year, and I don't want to see us do it again. So I would, I, I agree with you that we probably can't stop something and I wouldn't want to stop it. But I also wouldn't want our board to sit here today and say, okay, we would like to make sure that we're following through on supporting Ways and Means with the right-to-know request and then find ourselves X thousands of dollars later and had not.
Well, if we, if we do something where we, we put a five thousand dollar marker on it and have the school districts or have the um, superintendent inform us when we get to five thousand, so we can argue it at that point, and then, okay, another five thousand, again, because we can't. I, I don't know where we can say this is what the budget is. We can be notified of this and maybe we have to get legal advice on this, but I mean, if we want to put a number out there now and then, and have a conversation again when it gets to that point, but I just don't want to set the expectation that we're going to be able to cut off the spigot at that amount when there's probably very little likelihood that we can.
Correct. I agree with you.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's what I would like to see us get to.
Terry. Yeah. So for one, I would say that we have voluntarily shared everything that's been asked of us. And so I don't understand at what point we cross the threshold to requiring need-to-know as opposed to just voluntarily giving everything that's been asked, because we've given everything that's been asked and then some. So I'm, I'm very confused on why they feel this is that a need and understanding the cost associated and, and their whole point is to make sure that we are appropriately spending. And so to charge more money for something that we voluntarily done, um, I truly don't understand. And I would like to have um, really a monthly reporting of where we're at cost-wise, whether we cap it, whether we say, every, I literally tell me every month how much it's costing for, for your time for not only this, but the myriad of things that have been asked for. I would like to have an accounting of powers of our administration. And I would like to, because honestly, the entire purpose of these organizations is to help to advise and to inform. They have advised, they have informed, and what is happening now, I can't even describe what's happening now, right? And so I feel like it already oversteps the original charter in many ways. And yes, we would have to, we would have to comply with any right-to-know request. But I, I truly am flummoxed as to why there is a need for one when we have, we have voluntarily cooperated every step of the way. So I would absolutely like both an accounting of time and money on a monthly basis, please.
And just for clarification, Terry, number one, if you want to, you want to keep that and, and make a motion to, to that point, if you want to condense that. But this is the Ways and Means, there was a right-to-know request of Ways and Means information, not the board. It has nothing to do with us. We're just the governing body of Amherst School District. And because Ways and Means is an appointed board of the district, it's not on the individual Ways and Means members to have to fork up their own money for lawyer's fees.
Oh, no, no.
If there's a right-to-know request. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, did you want to make a motion on any cap? Does anybody want to make a motion on some sort of cap where we can reconvene, get an update and, and continue forward?
If, if what we're saying is, and what the legal advice is that there can be no cap, then I see no point in setting a cap. I, I, I think there is a point of coming back and, and discussing it every month, um, moving forward, right? Like i- i- if what our legal team is saying is that we cannot put in a cap. Um, I, I do think, you know, reporting back on, once we dig in a little bit, the money spent, uh, the time spent and potentially the advice given, right? If, if it is like legal feels like, we feel like our administration, our experts feel like it is time to just be done and, and, you know, comply with the right-to-know request, then I think that's important to know too. Um, so I mean, I, if people want to make a motion for a cap, they can, but it seems like there's no it, it's a sort of pointless exercise if there truly is, can be none.
How about this? I'll make a motion for the uh, I'll make a motion for the superintendent of the schools to inform the Amherst School Board when legal fees hit five thousand, where we can come together again to analyze those costs and get an estimate as to what's going to be happening down the road.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion, any questions on that, any clarification? It's pretty poorly worded off the top of my head. Jason?
Yeah, I just have one question. It might just be a comprehension issue on, on my end. Um, we were obligated. What are they seeking counsel for? I guess I don't understand that component of it, right? Like, we can compile all the emails, wouldn't we just voluntarily give them over? I understand potentially making sure that there's nothing that is protected under the non-public RSAs. But other than that, I don't fully understand why they would need legal counsel any further. And because that, as Josh has already stated, seems pretty cut and dry. So I guess I'm just, I guess I'm just maybe a little hazy on why so much legal counsel would even be necessary.
Why it's not just a data dump and then you're done with it.
Right. That's, I guess that's my, I, that's my question.
And, and I can only repeat what was discussed. It was out of a desire to ensure that this, that everything was followed correctly. Um, they, I guess there was this scenario, if, if someone sent an email to Ways and Means and it shared some personal information about their family, um, do we should, does that, is that part of the collection? And they just want to make sure that they follow the statute, but don't, you know, just do it right.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
I'm confused too.
A little confused. Boom. All right.
The only other, the only other thing that I'm just going to say is that I think it's important, obviously, if any of our committees feel that they need to make sure that they're in compliance with RSAs, it's obviously important that we follow those RSAs and that we have legal counsel for these types of things. I just also think that it's important that we really stick to knowing where the money is being spent.
Okay. Okay. So we'll take a vote on that motion uh, to cap it at five thousand before we get a, a re, uh, an update from the superintendent. Uh, and then uh, an estimate of what's going to be coming down the pipe from that point. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, none opposed?
The, the second part of the report really melds into the next agenda item, instructional resources. Um, so as you've seen in the news and, and see maybe in social media and, and just neighboring districts, um, there has, there has been a propensity and there's been some concerns about books in middle schools. Um, that, um, so the, the books in question, um, we verified are, that are going around on, I think, the Hampshire Journal Report. We do not have in the Amherst Middle School. But I did want to articulate that um, the Amherst School District, as well as all the school districts in the SAU have adopted a, a very deliberate and purposeful um, process to, to question and structural resource selection, whether it's within a course or within, in the library area. Um, and if P, I have, so we have very collaborative, elaborate media specialists in the district. Um, there are also leaders uh, in the state and I have enjoyed learning from them as we navigate um, just situations about collections and things. So um, if there are concerns, uh, me, reaching out to our library media specialist is the, is the great way to start. And if there is a necessity to follow with the deliberate or the policy, our library media specialists are well-equipped to steer people, to steer people through that policy and, and, and practice. Um, but if there's, if there was concerns about the books mentioned in, in Hampshire Journal, those are not in the Amherst Middle School.
And I think that was, that was the, the one thing that we did want to confirm, Steve, is that if you read that article um, and seen that article and really just seen the, the general news, there are certain books that are in that article, those you can confirm are not in our library at the middle school level. I presume they're not in Clark Wilkins either, but.
To be honest, I didn't, I'll be completely honest, I didn't check.
Okay.
So, uh,
Okay.
All right. I'll, I'll join. You and I are going down the gap. So it's just more of an FYI, provide the necessary information for the board. And uh, we are in very, very good shape. Policy Committee did an excellent job with best practice in that policy.
And with that policy, if there are books that come to a taxpayer's attention, there, that policy outlines the, the procedures of um, you know, reconsidering or having the school reconsider what books are actually in the library. So uh, those policies are available on the SAU thirty-nine.org website under policies. Uh, and you can find uh, that information in there and the, the proper steps to reconsider something. Josh?
Yeah. So I took a look and I, we last touched this in two thousand and twenty. Um, I might make the recommendation, just given everything, the policy committee, look at it again, uh, in part because I won't be on it anymore. So I can deal with it. Uh, back on, Josh. Like for, for example, in, in one of the sections, there's something about um, requiring students and, you know, I could see at Clark Wilkins, I'm not sure that that makes sense. So there might be some little cleanup on the policy, but overall, I think it's sound and, and we did a good job. Right. Any other questions for Steve regarding the two issues that were, that he mentioned or any other items um, that were in the agenda? Okay. Later on tonight, we will have a staffing discussion regarding uh, contracts for the FY twenty-four school year. And then we also have a lengthy non-public with Steve on a couple of issues uh, later on tonight as well. But for the meantime, uh, we have a food service item that I will turn it over to Ms. Facy for.
Thank you. So you have in your packet um, a nutrition services update, and this is a new practice that we're starting in all of the districts where um, we plan to provide quarterly updates on where we are with the food service program, just in terms of personnel and any new equipment that's been installed and as well as financial projections. So um, this is the first of those reports and we'll and, and the future, we'll put them in the consent agenda so that you can pull them out if you want to have a discussion, but um, they might not be super meaningful in quarter one, but at least um, you can see how we move along um, in, with the projections. Uh, so this is something that, a practice that uh, Crystal and I started when she was hired. We actually meet weekly um, and, and dive pretty deep into um, into the financials and take a look at where we are in terms of revenues and expenditures. And um, it really helps us to make any course corrections um, on, you know, on the fly as we go through um, monthly. So um, for the Amherst School District, they um, they're having a challenging year because the, in, in a good way, the demands have um, they're a little bit less than they were last year with the uh, with the, the waiver and the free um, food service program, but they, they haven't really backed off as much as the other districts. So, so the demand is quite high, which is great. Um, they have had some uh, difficulty in um, and they have some staff openings. So good news on the um, you know, for the budget, but the folks who are working are working really hard. Um, and Crystal has uh, stepped up to fill in the gap for the staffing. So she spends a lot of time in the Amherst School District um, helping out the kitchens. But they're doing a great job. The um, you know, she feels really good with the quality of the meals that are, are being presented in the um, the menu options. They've done a lot of work on that. So we've definitely made some improvements in um, in the food service program this year. Um, for some equipment, the freezer compressor, compressor condenser unit was replaced at Clark Wilkins this year. Um, so this will extend the life of that, that piece of equipment. Um, and it, just as a note that the equipment that is being purchased is portable. So if, and hopefully when we have um, a new facility, uh, these units are not being, uh, will not be wasted. Um, at AMS, the three-door reach-in freezer was replaced um, this year after reaching end of life. And the um, the two-door reach-in refrigerator has reached end of life. It says in here, there's, in your packet, there's uh, Crystal was in the process of getting quotes. She actually already has done that and um, she felt really good about the, the, the low end of the quote. So it, it's in the five thousand dollar range. So which was great. It does, it doesn't always work out that way, that the lowest is, is the best um, product, but in this case it was. So that was helpful. Um, so you'll see on page two of um, of this report, we are happily projecting a surplus of food service um, of a little over thirty-three thousand dollars. And as I said, that's mostly due to the maintaining such a high level of participation as well as unfortunately some staffing shortages, but that does help our financials. Um, and this is even with an increase in the cost of goods ranging between twenty and forty-eight percent. Um, so, so that's good news. We'll have more money to put into um, the food service surplus account. Uh, on page three, you can, uh, she did a nice report to show the year-over-year average participation uh, percentages. So you can see Clark Wilkins last year was sixty percent, this year it's fifty. Um, AMS was fifty-eight and this year it's projected to be about forty. So um, so we're maintaining quite a high level of participation in breakfast and lunch. So really good news for this, for the food service program. So this is what we want to see. We want to see a surplus, not as big as last year. It was a hundred and thirty-something thousand, but, but still, you know, really solid, um, really solid numbers. So.
Any questions for Amy on this? Jason?
Yeah. Well, first, thanks for compiling all this. It's, it's great to see and it's, it's great to see that we're trying to, you know, buy parts instead of buying new equipment.
Yeah.
So that's, that's great, uh, cost savings. My question is again, simply just because I don't necessarily understand things.
Yeah.
Um, when I look at the income loss of the last row on page seventy-five of the packet, so page two of the report.
Yep.
Could you explain a little bit like the fluctuation, right? So September was negative three thousand, but then October is a positive twelve thousand. Is that, are we placing orders during that time?
Yeah. Yeah. So we, we pre-buy a lot of stuff early on in the year. Yep.
And so that's why we're projecting in June.
Yep. And you'll see, yes. And you'll see, you know, differences um, in expenditures also like in wages. So you'll see March, that's a, that is a, and actually in September, those are a three-pay payroll month.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah.
So, yep. Um, and then there, there can be vacation times. So there's a lot of, she, she guys pretty deep.
So all that's included in this?
Yeah.
This number.
Yep. Yep.
How many days of school in June?
Yeah, right.
Yep. Gotcha. Yep. So.
Makes sense.
And these are still, you know, projections. I think this was as of, I don't think she has February actuals in here.
No, it's projected. Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. Um, so for the next report, we would, you know, it would be more updated.
Yeah. No, we're just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
Amy, my.
Yeah.
Sorry, Victoria, if you had a question, go ahead.
It's easy for Amy. Um, can you describe, when you say surplus, where does this amount of money end up?
So it gets to stay with us and we're actually able to, to use those funds um, for, you know, um, purchasing capital equipment or.
But in food services though, it's not siloed out to the rest. It's a siloed food service in his budget.
It stays in, in the particular, in the food service fund.
Okay.
So, um, and it, you know, can be used to offset deficits if we have those in future years. So it's um, it's, it's great to have. It's, yeah, it's the only district in SU thirty-nine that has a surplus right now. So.
Never seen a surplus thirty-five years.
Yeah. Yep. So we're, we feel really fortunate.
We'll, we'll find a way.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. So first off, thank you for the transparency and for giving us some insight into what's going on.
Yep.
I just wanted to give a shout out to our food service workers. They, um, I was there passing out smoothies to teachers recently and, and the kids were coming in for breakfast and she knew every child by name. They were telling her, it was right before break and they were all excited to tell her where they were going on their, on their break and what was going on. And the relationship that they have is just carries through to truly every member of our staff. I've spoken before about the lunch monitors and how they like make it really easy for the kids to find them and dress the same so they can go, oh, there's, you know, the lady that helps me. But I just think it's so unusual. There's such a stereotype of like the lunch lady being kind of the mean sort of um, not easy to approach person, but truly every part of our support staff is there for our kids, just like our teachers, our, our paras, and it's no different. And our children, they can't learn if they are not nurtured, right? And so having the breakfast program, it has started during my tenure and it was something I was really happy to see. And I think that it's really picked up um, momentum. And it's something that especially with a little bit earlier start time at the elementary, I think it became even more popular. That is like get the kids out the door, but they'll know, they'll have a breakfast and they'll know. And so I just want to thank the staff that does everything they can, even when they're short-staffed, to make sure that our kids have what they need and that it's, it's attractive to them and that they have choices and that they really is something that is consistent for parents too. I know that I always looked forward to hot lunches and, and um, when I had a child, I was like, oh, you're buying lunch. So um, thank you for, for all of them really supporting our students and, and helping them to be able to be prepared to learn.
Thank you, Terry. I'll um, pass it along to Crystal. So she passes that along to the staff. They'll appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I have two things. Number one, um, this is something Steve and I talk about in one of the videos that will come out tomorrow, I believe it is, when we talk about the budget and um, the impact of the budget and, and either voting for or voting against the budget. There's a note in here that the cost of product has gone up between twenty and forty-eight percent on average for food in the, in the district. So that's clearly a problem and, and we're working right now on FY twenty-two prices. But if we go to next year, uh, you're figuring, you're going to have about a fifteen percent inflation rate from twenty-two to twenty-four, if you factor in the, the two years or, over the last two years. Uh, so we're continuing to have to buy product and, and supplies at the FY twenty-two pricing levels, but the FY twenty-four costs, which again, twenty to forty-eight percent just for the food and then the, you know, And then the, you know, the average inflation has been, it will be close to 15% over that two year period. So again, why the budget is important to pass because this allows us to to budget increases and like that. My concern with this overall is 33,000 sounds great in 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 theory, but it's about 5% of the overall budget. We're already short staffed this year. So one person can easily eat up 33 grand in staffing. And then we're a little bit lower in participation, which we would expect when there's, you know, quote unquote, no free lunch. But we're also looking at increased costs and then increased staffing for next year. I have a concern that we're going to be up against that budget. So
Yeah.
It's more of a comment than a question, I guess.
No, and you're right. You know, most of the savings is due to being understaffed. So which is it's it's not great. It's not great for the people who are who are working and it's not great, you know, for our director who's had to you know, shows up in her in her chef uniform more days than not and is headed over to Clark Wilkins and AMS.
So we lose efficiency gained by directing.
Yeah.
Looking at, you know, other purposes on the line.
Yep.
But yeah, if cost of increase of employee with the ASSA contract.
Yeah, say the ASSA contract next year, if that passes, it's going to increase it only further. So. Josh?
Thank you. So yes, cool goes to Kristen and her team, and I would share Tom's concerns about where that money might go if we don't pass the budget. Also something to to note, I think there's some composting initiatives, green initiatives. I spoke with Dan Vayou a few days ago. And I believe those are going to be coming to our school as well. And one of the side benefits is that it is less expensive for the town to use the vendor who will compost that material versus just take it to the dump. So I would encourage the board to support those initiatives as they come through. And I think there could be some interesting ways to get our kids involved as well in some of that and science and everything else. So I think it's good stuff coming and it is potentially another way to shave a little bit off that budget by by moving to composting.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, we talked about it as a leadership team and beginning on back of the house stuff. You know, and food prep, any food prep waste and things like that, work on the back of the house before we start getting kids going because it's it's difficult enough. Yeah, but but we're anxious to to begin the discussion. We think there's some low hanging fruit that's going to be impactful on the back of the house stuff. Any other questions for Amy? Thank you for that report and please let Crystal know. We said thank you as well. Very insightful. So. All right, moving along now to the NWEA Insights Report. This is a look at the a deeper dive into the metrics of the NEWA test results from fall of twenty two, which were October, November, Christine. They were taken in October, correct?
September, yeah, end of September.
Okay.
Maybe very beginning of October, a few spilled into.
Okay. So this was, these were the NEWA tests taken last fall at the end of September, beginning of October, and the results are compared to the the growth from the previous fall. We just had the winter NEWA test done and just got the results of those. Before you get into this, are we able to get a look at the insights report for the winter ones to compare to the fall ones in our next meeting, do you think?
So we only do the insights report once a year. The insights report is a K through 10th grade across the whole SAU report and it compiles all of it. It's really a high level report. Certainly, you know, we we do have test information from winter. This we only ever get once because it's really not worth doing unless you have a lot of scores. So we have most of our test data in the fall. So that's why we've done this insights report fall to fall, but then we continue to monitor throughout the year and looking both at our winter and then our spring testing.
I'll say I'll let you, I'll turn the floor over to let you expound on it before I ask any more questions.
Okay, thanks. So the insights report really, as I mentioned, is a high level report. It is meant specifically for us at the SAU as well as our principals to really look just big picture to see if there are any areas, any grade levels in general that might need a little additional support or any areas we're looking at for maybe some curriculum or resource adjustments or changes. So we'd like to provide this to the board just because it is also provided to the community. We provided this to Ways and Means. So we thought it was important that the board certainly have access to it as well. I won't go into a lot of detail. It's probably better for me to take some questions, but I know Steve and I have been doing a lot of work with our leadership team. Because these reports typically end up being most helpful for us at the SAU level as well as our building leadership. We've been talking about what is that best way to use data. So I know Steve will talk about that a little bit as well, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board for Christine? Obviously, we haven't seen much of an impact on the math. The math curriculum in this would not have had an impact yet. I don't know if you've had a chance to compare fall to winter scores. Have we seen, I mean, the the fact that we have on here 36% in math and then 32% combined college ready for math and reading is concerning. You know, in terms of hitting both, 36% for math is incredibly concerning, but have we seen any impact so far in that, you know, from fall to winter in a difference in math at this point?
So two questions. I'm going to answer your college readiness question specifically. So on page nine of the report, it lists a metric about being college ready. That is a little misleading. So NWEA uses fifth grade through ninth grade results to determine whether or not a student is college ready and they actually compare to the ACT. So they do, they've done a linking study to see how students typically perform on NWEA and then how they end up performing on ACT. So with that, what's a little bit challenging is ACT, they use the 24 benchmark NWEA does to determine whether or not a student is college ready. And in in doing so, that's a pretty high benchmark to hit that college ready. And I would argue it's not necessarily meant to be a college readiness indicator, but NWEA uses that for that. So generally, when they they did this study, middle school students are likely to be college ready if they're or what NEWA is determining as college ready, if they're between the 70th and 84th percentile in math on NWEA. As you can imagine, that's a really high benchmark because that's percentile. So if you're comparing you know, across the country, so the 70th percentile, there's only 30% of students that are scoring higher than you. So between the 70th and 84th percentile in mathematics to hit that, what NEWA has set as that that determination for college readiness and then between the 66th and 75th percentile in reading. And again, I even looking at ACT, when you look at the norms for you know, ACT, they do also have the national ranking for ACTs. And for example, in English, to get a 24, say you get a 24 on ACT, you're in the 77th percentile nationally. So this is a really high benchmark. So you look at that number, I think it's misleading that NEWA uses that. And I'm happy to share all this information with the board. I do have it. It is almost inflammatory and I shared that with NWA. Steve was on a call with me. It it causes, it it looks like a cause for concern and a worry. And when we were on a call with NWEA, Steve and I said, you know, hey, this is really concerning for us. Can you tell us more? They're like, if you're at 36%, that's amazing. I never see a district that high. So I I'm not sure why NWA chooses to use this metric in this way and to use this language. So it really is a linking between NWEA and ACT. And again, happy to share this over email and and provide the ACT documents and NWEA documents if helpful for you. And it is really just determining whether or not you're likely to get a 24 on ACT. That's what that indicator is. Did that answer that question? Then I'm happy to talk about math after.
No, it does. I think it answers the the question there. I think just as as irrelevant as a equivalency, just looking at the University of Iowa, they have on their website, an SAT equivalency, so 24 is roughly 1160 to 1190 according to their metric. So it's the first one I found on on the internet, but that's a little more, I'm more familiar with that than ACT.
Yeah. So I I wish they actually, because NWA hasn't a linking study to SAT, so I don't know why they link to ACT for this specific report and report out on that. We do actually have the ability to look at that, the linking study and where our students might fall for SAT. And then for math, so it is hard to tell from this report and look at the impact math has had. I can say though, that last year we were seeing some positive results already, even just from piloting last year in kindergarten through fifth grade in general, especially looking at Clark Wilkins. Because again, as we've talked about with math, when you begin a program in earlier grade levels, it is a little bit easier for students than as you move up the grade level, each grade gets a little more challenging because it's a new context, it's new vocabulary or language or materials. And students haven't had those experiences throughout, you know, multiple grade levels. So when you kind of switch gears on fifth graders, it's definitely a little more challenging. But last year we saw some positive results on New Hampshire SAS on NWEA in math. In looking at these, the with this report, you know, the, and I lost my page, let me go back to it. In looking at this, it it is hard to tell because we're really looking at all of last year, which was our pilot year, which half of the year was with one of our programs and the other half was with the other program. So we have been looking this year as well and often you'll see an implementation dip when you implement a new program and we did not see any dip last year, even using two different programs. So I think that that's a real positive from last year and we saw some really strong results, especially on New Hampshire SAS last year. So overall in math, you might recall previously, we had had kind of a canyon in the middle, right after second grade, our students kind of fell off a cliff and I had had some pretty deep conversations with the people at OGAAP, which is some of the math training that we do. And they had shared that often it's trying to push students too quickly in second grade towards you know, introducing standard algorithm too early and not developing that deep number sense first in students. So with this, I'm not seeing this canyon, which is really exciting, or you know, kindergarten is very high and remember that that is fall. They're not expected to know anything in kindergarten. They're expected to come in almost with no pre-K experiences. So our students do very well because many of them do have pre-K experiences. So kindergarten is very high. We have a little bit of a dip in first grade there. That is our challenging and large group. And the group that we actually moved a teacher into over the summer as we got more students into that grade level, but really excited to see second, third, fourth and even fifth grade. And really those grade levels, they're some of the highest out of our entire district in math. So I think we are seeing a little bit of that. You know, positive, our teachers have worked extremely hard and really, I I think just that the focus on math that we've seen a little bit of it. So it's hard. You know, it's just one year and it was our pilot year. We are still continuing to see some good growth in math this year, different at different grade levels. Again, you know, there are some kinds, sometimes highs and lows, but in looking at our winter results, you know, we're seeing some strong results in math still. Would that answer?
Yes, thank you.
So I know that we've had a lot of questions about how we compare not only nationally, because it's it's a wide test, but to the districts that we compare ourselves against for a lot of other things, right, that that are socio economically pretty close to us, physically fairly close to us. How are we looking kind of compared to those districts? Because I know that we benchmark against them for many things. But in some of these results, are we holding our own? Are we, is there a real gap?
So it's challenging. We don't have access to their NWEA results. These are, you know, districts pay for these results. They sometimes keep them pretty close to the chest and don't share them publicly. We were actually connecting with Hollis Brookline and at some of the lower grade levels, they've actually moved a little bit away from NWEA, like in that K one, K one, two area. So we don't typically ask other districts for their NWEA results. I mean, we can maybe hunt around and if they shared them with the board, we might be able to come across them. But there's no easy way to access them without reaching out to other districts for them.
Okay, thank you.
Victoria?
Can you explain the, and I think you might have mentioned this, but can you explain when a student is in, let's say, a first grade or second grade, and then I know that there's another test. Can you explain like how that impacts these numbers or?
Yeah. So there's a tricky thing with NWEA. They actually have three separate tests. There's a K two test, a two, five test, and then a six plus test. Six plus goes all the way through to high school. The K two test is a very different test than the two, five test and they second grade is that overlap year with when do we move students to that that other test? So the K two test is fully read to a student. Students are not reading. It is fully read. If students are doing well, the reading will drop off for them and they have to specifically like press the button to make it continue to read to them. So that test is typically more it it's really assessing whether or not in the K two reading test, whether or not a student is is likely to be on track for grade level readiness or, you know, reading at grade level where that state assessment would be in third grade. So that K two test is meant to be a predictor for third grade reading on grade level essentially. So it is looking and it's it's kind of more of like a quick temperature check and kind of an overarching kind of piece rather than really narrow and diagnostic for if a student is struggling with reading, we won't be able to, we might know that there's that they might be struggling with reading based on NWEA, but we won't know how we need to best service them. It's it's really this broad kind of overarching, quick temperature check. And for math, math is a little bit more similar, except that that difference is it is fully read to them. However, in second grade, we have to make this leap at some point and we have to make the decision as a district, NWEA provides some guidance as to whether we move a student in second grade to the two, five test, or if we keep them on the K two test. So the K two test will only go up through second grade content. So if that student at any point during that second grade year is likely to be in third or fourth grade content, you're they're going to hit the ceiling for that test. So you have to move them. But in moving students, you move from like a 30 to 40 minute test up to you know, technically 55, 60 minutes, but when it's a reach for them, they're sometimes at an hour and a half on that test. So that's a big deal to make that jump. So we've been pretty cautious about that. NWEA assures us that the RIT scores, now again, if student is hitting a ceiling, the RIT score isn't going to be accurate for them. Or if they're struggling because they're feeling a little anxious or overwhelmed with the length of that test, that certainly might not, that score might not be as representative. But the NWEA assures us we can still compare scores, RIT scores across those two tests, but they are a different experience for students. So it's not read to them any longer. One thing that we do do for students who might be ready for the two, five math test, but are still on the K two reading, we give them read aloud for math and we have that option of doing that. So we do turn read aloud on if a student might not yet be quite on grade level for reading, but they're ready for that two, five math test. So it may have been more information than you wanted, but there are big differences between them. And it is a little tricky and and we do get that too when students move to the six plus test from fifth grade, it's it's a leap. It's a lot more challenging. There's not a lot of content. When a student's in that six plus test, there's not a lot of fifth grade content. So in sixth grade, when we move them, if a student isn't quite at grade level yet, there's going to be less content available for them.
Anybody else? Any other questions? Jason?
Yeah, not necessarily questions, just, you know, I highlighted things in blue, so I just said, just read some of them.
Yeah.
You know, just for general consumption, because I don't think the public's necessarily going to read all of these these things, but you know, so again, this is straight, straight from from the inside report, 40%. So 40% of the district students' scores are in the top achievement quartile when all subjects measured or combined compared to 25% nationally.
Yeah.
Right? So that's obviously positive. And then when you're looking at our, our, you know, most vulnerable or struggling students, students who are not doing so well, right? Because every district does have those. So we have 8%, right? 8% of our students scored, you know, in the lowest quartile. Nationally, that would be 25%. So we have a far smaller population. What's really important to me and what I would be looking at is is their growth percentile is 72.
Yeah.
That that means they're growing you know, faster than their than their like peers in in that group.
Yeah, significantly faster.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I just think it's, again, I don't think the general public's going to consume all of this. So just to kind of point out some of the things that the report does does kind of share.
Yeah. And thank you. That's on page five of the report. Just anyone in the public who might be looking. That's on page five of the report, just anyone in the public who might be looking at that. And those bars tell a really good story. You know, that, that top bar is, is supposed to be 25% and we have 40% of our students in that top bar in reading and 39% in math.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
All right, next up, it's titled District Assessment in here. It's on page 92, 90, starts on page 91 of our agenda. And this is something that we referenced in the February meeting. We discussed it a little bit in March, and it'll certainly be something that we discuss over the course of the next four to five months. Hopefully to have something in place by September 1st this year with, with Superintendent or to-be Superintendent Mike Berry on board, and really getting involved with him on this as well. But assessing the success and assess, assessing the education of the school district, as, as we've talked about ad nauseam along the last couple of months. Standardized test scores are the one solid statistical metric that we have. But what else is, is being utilized? And how can we come up with a plan and essentially have a binder of information? So when somebody asks, why are we doing this in the budget? We can say, this is how we value the education. Everything, soup to nuts, all that goes involved in this. So Steve had put together a rough draft of items that we had discussed briefly. And then this is certainly the starting point of this conversation. Steve, I will turn it over to you to highlight anything you'd like, and then we can open it up for board questions. But the way that I see this going is a chance for us to digest this as well, and then come back at maybe the next meeting and start to act on some of the board action items that you have there before the end of the school year, so that we have time to digest this, add any other alternative solutions or alternative things that we want to discuss, and then do that listening session along with it.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate the board's interest and leadership in this. It's been, you know, I've been here 20, 21 months, and how NWA is used. Like, we just spent a half hour on one piece of data that is 25, 30, 50 questions an hour, an hour and a half. And it's, it's, I've struggled with it, to be completely honest. But it is what we have, and it spurred this conversation, spurred some disquietness with me, but which, when I get disquiet, I talk to everybody and I reach out and I think about it. So a couple of things for me, some guiding principles. I, as your interim superintendent, as your assistant superintendent, as someone in this, I've never, ever run and no one I work with in the SAU runs from accountability. Data for me has been, has been a way to create a sense of urgency, and sometimes principals, sometimes teachers, sometimes the community. And the data, whether it's NWA or other data, has created a sense of urgency. I'm privileged to work with, with administrators and teachers that care deeply and want the best for their kids. So this is not about avoiding accountability or shirking our responsibility. It's trying to figure out the best way to do it. And, and, and that's where, that's where, and this, so how, where, where does this come from? It's come from lots of discussion, and the leadership team has had a piece of this. Mike Berry and I have sat and chatted about this, but it's very, very drafty. As I like to say, I'm just dating this, I'm not engaged to it, and certainly not married to it. So we're in the dating stage of this work. The couple of things, I want to start thinking about answering key questions. And I, I'm privileged because Victoria and Tom and I meet regularly just about the state of the state and areas of interest. And we've had meaningful conversations, and Christine and I, and Amy and everybody, about one of the most critical things, and it's a great question for board. If I ever run for board, the first thing I'm going to ask is how are our kids reading? A very appropriate and important question. And so can we look at data as we answer that question? So not just spend a half hour on NIWA, but spend a half hour on NIWA as it answers that question. But as we talk about, we don't like to use a single piece of data. Want to have more pieces of data. So NIWA is a standardized test, it's valuable. We also have a state standardized test. And Terry, to your point, the state standardized test, that data is published. We can look at Bo, we can look at HOP, we can look at all those. So that data is, if you're interested in comparing, and this place is interested in that, by the way. I, I get it. I get it, I'm not totally clueless. But that piece of data is important, and Christine, and there's a little bit of starting to have growth there. And Christine's educating, I, I go to Christine College and all this stuff, to be completely honest. And, and I enjoy going to Christine College and all this data stuff. So there's a piece there. I also want, we, we use a progress monitoring tool, a screening tool by our reading specialists, our experts in the field, sit down with kids regularly and assess them one-on-one in their reading. That is an important piece of data. That is very much connected to our curriculum and what we're trying to do assessed by experts' ear. There, there's not a transition or drift, and there's always some drift from standards to NIWA. There's some drift to state standards to what we're doing, there has to be. But it's a very tight, so a piece of this is also when we're talking about reading. Yes, we have to talk about NIWA, I'm not hiding, I promise I'm not hiding. We got to talk about the state test, yes, because maybe we want to compare. But we also have to look at what our reading specialists, our experts in the field say about, they're talking to every single kid. And I, I want to have that as part of this discussion. I also want to have our local assessments. Our local assessments are tight to our instructional strategies and our standards that we've adopted. So when we talk about how our kids are reading, please, let's not just talk about NIWA. Let's talk about all these pieces of data and unpack it and see what we can get. And we started that. When I go to Christine College, she showed me all the local assessments in grades four and how their kids are doing on our standards. That is an amazing thing we have. We have to utilize that as not solely, no, it cannot be just teacher, can't be, I'm with you. But it can't be just NIWA either. But the question is, how are our kids doing in reading? That is the best question you can ask, especially a K through eight. I think it's best everywhere, but a K through eight place. And that answer, I have to be able to answer that for you. And Mike will make me, because he's going to be my boss. So, and Mike will say, Christine and Steve, answer this question, and we'll answer the question. And the same, how are we doing in math? Same thing. More than one piece of data, not just NIWA, not just data assessment, our, our experts meeting with kids as well as our local assessments together. And we can decide if this is, all right, if we've got 80% in reading are proficient or above on two out of these four, great. Or we can decide others. So that's still, there's still work to do here. But this is, I'm trying to move your thought and trying to think about this in the context of questions and answers. How are you doing in reading and how are you doing in math? Incredibly important, because those are foundational skills. I mean, I think you said it in the videos.
I probably did, it was probably pretty eloquent too.
Very eloquent. And also, I've talked with Meg and I've talked with Heather, it is absolutely appropriate, absolutely fair to, how are our special education students doing? I want you to know, I want you to care as deeply about our specialized, with your regular, about every kid, right? And so again, how are we doing in AMES Web, in state test, in NIWA? And, and right, inclusion in all those. But there, talking Heather, we really got to focus on growth, right? Because they are starting with a different profile. So that's really a number there. When I go to Christine College, we'll focus on that piece. But also, remember now our local assessments in special education, those are important because we have scaffolded. We have provided specially designed instruction. That's really important to look at that. If you look at pieces without, without a local assessment, we're not doing justice. Because we have, if we do this well, we are providing specially designed instruction for those youngsters, which hopefully, right, meets their needs. So also, one thing that's really important to me, it's really important to Christine, really important to Amy, really important to Amina and our group, is our, how is the health of our workforce? Is it healthy? Is it, and how are we going to look at that? We, we, tonight, at, at, at the staffing portion, we're going to talk about two, two teachers that left during the school year. This year, we've had four students leaving Amherst School, School District during the school year.
Four teachers.
Four. What did I say?
Students.
I apologize, thanks.
Yeah.
So four teachers, workforce. I'm, I'm concerned. Um, you know, we're exiting, we're talking to these people, but is this, is this a one-year blip? And yes, there've been wonderful opportunities for these, but, but we have to take a look. The most important thing, I've said this a million times, the most important thing that happens in our schools is what happens in a classroom with our teachers. And is our workforce, are they healthy? Are they, are they, are we taking care of them? Are they engaged and all that? So, so we have to take a look at that. And what about the community? Is the community engaged? Are they connected? Are they coming to the listening sessions? Are they showing up deliberative? Are they connected to our schools? And Amy and I talk about this all the time. I, you know, our report card, Tuesday. Did we communicate the needs and the level of funding necessary to maximize and deliver the promise of public education for this community? I care deeply about Tuesday. It was, and we, around this table, the leadership team, the principals have worked extraordinarily hard to develop what we think is a budget that helps meet the needs and move the needle on this. And Amy and I have talked about this. If, if that is not accepted by this community, Amy and I have to start over. They got to figure it out. We didn't do our jobs. That, I did not do a good job. As your interim superintendent, did I communicate the needs and the level of funding necessary to accomplish what this community wants for our school? It's Tuesday, right? That's going to be the feedback. Are our families engaged? You know, we just, there's a, there's a panorama type survey. We're starting to take a look at data. I'm working with a community member to help. So there's some survey data we look at. And that's, is the, is the PTA flourishing? I mean, I think we've seen some extraordinary fundraising, right? And so, so there's some indicators that they are engaged at that level. Are, are, one of the things that we're looking, are, are teachers engaged? One of the things that I'm doing right now is I'm certifying basically a third of our seat for, for, for our credentials, right? That's, so I'm taking a look at every, a third of our teaching staff, the number of professional development hours that didn't last three years. Unbelievable. But I want to look at that yearly, are they up and down? You know, are we up? Because it is impressive how much professional development they do. It's, they need what, 75?
They have hope once, sir.
And, and so, yes, I believe as an indicator of our engagement and our devotion to the profession is the number of professional development hours our teachers do, and it's impressive right now. But let's take a look at it regularly. Are our students engaged? We had, start looking at our, our, our participation rate in extracurricular activities. If I could, I would have every single student at Amherst Middle School participate in after-school activity. We know that connections in after-school and with a second adult in our school increases performance incredibly. If, if we have 30% of our kids participating in extracurricular activities, that's an issue. But let's look at that. And then we also, I think, we need to take a look at and report out our, how many students are homeschooled? How many students have we lost in KEA going to private school? That's a number that's important. Are we not meeting our needs of our community? And this is just the beginning, but I want, I'm trying to put the context of this work in answering questions and, and providing information in just a couple of, so as a leadership team, and, and Mike, we're looking at getting everybody together early June, you know, when the school's out and spend some time in preparation, what I hope is an Amherst School Board retreat to dig in on this. But we need to be honest, we need some work with the leadership team. We're all, you know, but we've heard it and they've seen it. Couple of things that are coming, how does this work go down to the next level and support building goals? And that's, that's what we got to work out. Because if, if board's interested in reading, then what do we do then? And they are interested in reading, and they need to be. And then, so how does that filter down to Clark Wilkins and to Amherst Middle School for their building goals and, and principal goals? That's what we're looking at. Also, you know, engage, engage challenge and support, right? The mission, I mean, that's something that I haven't taken on enough this year in my budget development, my work, is how are we engaging kids? How are we challenging kids? And how are we supporting kids? Because those, that is the mission of the Amherst School District, and I think even beyond. And, and so that's an area that we may want to, we may want to connect this to that mission as well. Engage, challenge and support in how we're doing. I'm, just to be honest, I'm struggling with spending time on one data without answering a question that's important to the board, important to this community, important to me as your interim soup and soon to be your assistant soup. I'm not struggling with taking a look at data and how we assess the effectiveness of what we're doing. We need to do that. But I think we need to do it in, in multiple data points and a way to answer the important questions. So if anybody, because how, how are we doing in reading? We know that 82% of our third graders are reading, but right now in sixth grade, we're down to 42, and we got to pump that up. And then if we do this, as Tom says, before the budget cycle, then the budget supports movement on these areas. And I, and I don't want to hide from that. I don't want to, that doesn't mean, you know, one of the first conversations, Tom, it doesn't mean we throw money at every problem. Maybe we have to restructure, but it does impact how we spend money. And, and, you know, Tom said today in the video, one of the things I'm very, very concerned about, it's about 5,000 hours of literacy support in the Amherst budget. New, 5,000 additional hours to support literacy between a reading teacher, two fellows, and the library assistant. I desperately need those 5,000 hours. And those five hours, 5,000 hours are a bargain. And if we don't get those, I have less opportunity to move what I think is the most important thing in education, and that is reading for our kids in the Amherst School District. So I, I don't want anybody to come away that, oh, Steve's hiding from NIWA. I don't hide from anything. I take responsibility, isn't, not take responsibility is not my vice. I just want to be fair and look at local assessments, our reading specialists, our state assessment, and NIWA equally, and take a look at the whole package. So you have real data and a comprehensive data approach, so you can answer the most important question, which is reading. I'm asking you to consider that, and, and when you're driving around, thinking about that as, as we start digging in, and I would love, Alyssa, in my past life, and we had questions like this, we had a listening post. And I would love to have a listening post and say to the community, what do you want? And how do you gauge our effect? And then work that in. And just listen to the community about, hey, how do you know if we're doing a good job? It might be my kid comes home smiling every day. Might be my kid wants to go to school. I get that, that was me. Reading and my kid went, wanted to go to school. My biggest fear was my child would not want to get on that bus. I've seen it, I did it, I did it. I, I did home visits where kids wouldn't come to school. They want to come to school and read, that was my big. And my son, I did, my first video was here in terms of my son's struggle in reading. And double dose and all that fun stuff. I apologize. Anyway, that's, I want, just, just some stuff to think about with the board.
Glad you asked my parents about wanting to go to school and loving to read. Would have been a very disappointing day for you. So, all right, so, so thoughts from the board on, on high-level stuff here for Steve and, and the initial phase, I guess, phase one of this project, if you will? Victoria?
Yep, I'll dig in. It looks great. This is exactly what I was hoping you were going to come back to us with, you know, because we know that you have this information. We're just needing you to give it to us to be able to work together. Something about families being engaged, I was thinking the amount of parents who come for conferences.
Love it.
Or the, and.
Love it.
Open house attendance.
Love it.
I thought those two would be, would be helpful.
Thank you.
In the staff area, we talked about the PTA in terms of parents. PTA, the T is the teacher, that should also be there, as well as extracurricular participation, just like the students have extracurricular participation.
Yeah, let's flush this out, thank you. We can, we, working together and with the community, we can make a, a real, I'm working with a community member, we talk about a collage of assessment.
Jason?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're, how in detail you want to get right now. I know apparently we have a lengthy non-public, which I'm really looking forward to.
We do, yeah.
Oh, you said that with sincerity, Jason.
I mean, I certainly have ideas, but I don't know if it'd be.
No, it's going to be great. I mean, I look forward to it.
Yeah, but you know, maybe, maybe, you know, retreat. But one thing I would like to put on the table now is, and I don't even know if this is possible, it obviously would be voluntary, not obligatory by, by any means. But as we do this, I think it'd be also important to have not only administration involved, but some like, in the weeds educators involved in, in, in data points as well. Maybe a few, you know, maybe a special educator, maybe a related service provider, because, and, you know, a couple of gen ed teachers or, or, or what have you, just to get their input as to how they assess what's working in their classrooms or not.
Love it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to say first off, I appreciate your passion as you talk about these things, because I know that you are, as all of us, you're passionate about kids and, and doing what's best for them. We've used the term a lot in the past couple of years of being data-driven and evidence-based. And so I think that we have recognized that we need to do a better job of sharing our own data and evidence. And I think this is a really crucial step in that direction. That, that we have a good feeling, we have things that, you know, we have our own things that we've used, but we've not communicated them well enough. And we have not put them in a format that is understandable and that we can really track and, and be able to show a through line that's understandable to those who are not with it every day. And I know that even for us, we're with it a lot, but not every day like all of our educators are. And so I appreciate looking at it in a broad way, and I think that looking at a portfolio approach, right? Because we are looking at our children and saying, you know, when your standard's based, you're, you're, well, you want competencies. And, and you're, you're not looking at a single test, you're not looking at a single thing. You're saying, what is, what is the combination of what represents what you know? And so I think that the way that we present, how are our students doing, has to be that same thing. And I think that a lot of talk goes back to, I was reading just today, and in fact, I'm sorry, I was a little bit late today because I got caught up watching your video. I thought I had enough time, and I didn't, to make it all the way through. It's very well done. And so, and I, I wanted to know if I had any questions when I got here. It's very well done. And so, and I, I wanted to know if I had any questions when I got here. So thank you guys for doing that. Um, but I, I really feel like we also need to stress the fact that not every kid is going to go to college and shouldn't. It's not the right path for every child. And what are we doing along the way to make sure that we're helping our students identify what's the right path for them? And so, you know, what are we doing to make sure that we get them prepared so that when they get to the middle school, they get to um, the high school, that if they want to go towards a trade, that we've got them teed up for that, right? We have enough information that they know if that's what they want to pursue. Um, what are we doing to make sure that we have extended learning opportunities, not only in high school, but in our middle school? I think it would be appropriate. Those are things that are near and dear to my heart, and we have a very involved community that can help make those things happen. And so I think there are lots of opportunities as we do this to really partner and having, um, Mike come down from the high school and having that perspective as he's learning a little bit more about our younger grades. I think it's going to be a nice opportunity to really join those two together and letting you be back in your true love of being in the classroom and with the curriculum. I think that it's going to give us a lot of opportunities for synergy between all of that. Um, forgive my, my corporate speak. I've been traveling on business and I'm still in business mode. Um, but I do think that, um, I'm excited to see the holistic approach that you're looking to take. And, and again, I don't think that we're dodging anything. I think that we're saying we've said all along, we believe in the whole child, and now we're looking at a way to represent that better and share that out in a more appropriate fashion. So I think it's a great, a great step and I'm with you on this journey and thank you for, for getting it going.
Any other comments?
So I think at this point, um, if the board wants to take this back individually and look at, you know, think about some additional points, uh, and if somebody wants to correct me on this, I'm, I'm more than willing to take advice, but I think we bring this back for the April meeting, uh, and in the meantime, Steve, if we can leave it on you to, uh, look at some potential dates in that first week of school after April vacation, where we can do something in the schools and it may, it may honestly take more than one listening outpost, just because one day may be a little limiting. Um, but after vacation, maybe one or two dates that we can look at to host something in Clark and/or Wilkins, uh, maybe something at AMS too, to, to be able to take input on this. But if the board can provide their input by April, um, just so we have a, a further list that we can bring to the public in that listening post and then have Steve schedule something for, for May. Um, we can have that community session. So it gets us lined up to be able to really work with Mike and Steve come summertime, uh,
I think it's a great task. I think it works, works great. As you're driving around, keep thinking about.
Anybody disagree with that? I don't want to speak for the board, but.
No, I don't disagree. I just, I guess a question. I know there's two, uh, requested board actions. We need to make motions on those or is that just?
I, I mean, if somebody wants to, we can, but I think that it's, it's what, I, I use those as my, my thought process here. Yeah. Because again, thinking of this now, I, I'm thinking of new things already, so I want to keep Steve here and just keep adding to it. But if we can compile those and you can send them to me and I can aggregate them for Steve, and then we can add those to the list. And then really see what's possible, um, you know, when we start to get together this summer, what, what is measurable, what's not measurable. Um, you know, for example, I think of C T E preparation stuff in A M S for kids that may want to go to C T. You know, like how I called it C T instead of vocational?
Nice. I love it.
So how many kids that, you know, may have an inkling for that in sixth grade or seventh grade? Um, you know, what are we doing to, to nurture those kids as well compared to just waiting until they get to high school before they can go to, um, the C T Academy? So. Perfect. Um, moving on then to facilities, uh, Victoria, this will be heavily on you to start and then I will, uh, carry the backend of it, but I will let you start first as Steve gets the screen ready. Uh, just the items tonight, we'll, we'll discuss the, the roof and ventilation project, phase one of that. We have an estimate on portables, uh, regardless of the outcome next Tuesday, we, we do have to have a plan B in place. So this is the start of plan B. Ideally, we'd be able to scrap it, but we'll see what happens on Tuesday. Uh, and then we'll talk about, we'll just bring up the annex conversation again. That has been a, a hot topic over the last, uh, couple of months, but particularly of late. So we'll just address a couple of concerns that we had. Um, and highlight the board's thought process on that, but.
Portable's going first?
Uh, roof and ventilator, oh yeah, portables.
Portables first.
Great.
So just very quickly, the roof and ventilator, there are no updates from our last board meeting regarding that, and that will be on the Amherst Building and Grounds meeting on March thirty-first.
So we'll have.
So April, yeah, April will be when we have updates for that one. There are only three slides about portables tonight. So for those of you who have seen lengthier presentations, this is a shorter one, a much shorter one.
You're sharing.
There it is. Yeah. There it is. Sorry. Oh, it's the wrong one.
Let's see the next one.
Yeah. Say that one.
Oh.
Where it is. How's that?
That's it.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, so we've talked about portables. Um, we have discussed, the Amherst School Board has put out um, an explanation that the use of portables is, um, the plan B, if you will, that has been most deeply, um, looked at in terms of cost information. So the portables from the Amherst Building and Grounds, which is part of J F A C, um, they, i- in those meetings, there has been conversation about, do we need information regarding the cost of portables? Do we need more information? Obviously we've already had information going back to twenty twenty. It's now twenty twenty-three. Costs have obviously changed as the world has also changed. Um, so the, um, Director of Facilities, Roger Preston, went out and did some information seeking, um, through our relationship with D E W Construction, um, and also Triumph and received some more detailed estimates in February of twenty twenty-three. So at the March thirty-first Amherst Building and Grounds meeting, we will discuss those estimates in much more detail. We will continue the discussion regarding, um, the programming, core spaces, site work, security and air circulation. Um, when you talk about programming, we will be looking at the Banwell Architects list of the programming space that would be incorporated into the new building to understand which spaces are, um, are necessary in a portable. And then we would also be making sure that our core spaces are, um, accounted for. And that would include different, um, surfaces and different spaces that are needed for that, which also are available in the programming documents that we have for, um, Banwell. And then we would be looking at site work to make sure that obviously we know where those portables would be. Um, currently in looking at the programming and the site work, we're, we're somewhat fortunate, I guess, that we've had portables at Clark, at Wilkins and at A M S in the past. So we do know where those portables have been, um, and then it will be maybe a jumping off place to say, is that the right spot or not? So what we're going to do is discuss those things, um, at the end, it's just a couple more slides, but at the end, if anybody has specific questions that they want me to bring forth at that Amherst Building and Grounds meeting, I'm happy to do that. Or if any, um, board members want to email questions to me prior to three twenty-nine, uh, which is next Wednesday, then that would be helpful. And then on April twentieth, we have our next school board meeting. That's that April meeting that I feel like we've referenced a lot tonight. So this is also going to be on that agenda. If you can go to the next slide. Yep. So these are, they're small. I apologize, but they're, um, they are the estimates, the very base cost estimates that, uh, Roger has received from D E W and Triumph. There are, um, several areas of these that are still to be determined. So when you look at these numbers, you should really consider them as a very early estimate. Um, in the yellow highlight, it, um, includes remove existing foundation. Um, that obviously i- if it's yellow, that means, yellow with a zero dollar, that means that there will be an increase there. And then on the next slide, um, these are just three points that we're gonna, um, really have to dig into when, if we have to talk about portable usage. The first is the security. We've discussed how portables, uh, lack security because they're not part of a main entrance sequence and they're not connected to the main building. There will be conversation and I believe there's desire, um, to find some way to connect to the main building. Um, a covered walkway or something of that sort, which is not included on that previous slide. The second is site work, again, to ensure the best placement on the site. Um, we want to do some historical work. We understand that there were some portables on the Wilkins site. Um, when they were removed, they were sinking into the ground. Um, and we just want to make sure that that's something that we can prevent in that area and better understand the placement there. Uh, that's also in that same, um, backfield area where we have some of the septic problems that we heard about last year. So I just, we're going to have to make sure that we understand that better. Um, and finally, healthy spaces. We know that most portables do not have fresh air circulation. Um, there's no fresh air that comes into the building unless those windows are open. And so that, those three points are, um, things that are slightly different from building a new building. So these will be three points that we really need to focus on if, um, if we find ourselves needing to look at the portables option.
So you, you mentioned the site work and ensuring the best placement on site where the previous portables, I, you were talking about Clark or Wilkins in particular, previous portables, there were some soft ground issues. Obviously we've done all the site, uh, we've dug the, dug the test pits, tie and bond has done the site survey. That's not a concern for a new building, I think.
No, so it's, it's more a concern of, um, what materials they would need prior to the portables.
Oh, so it's the backfilling.
It could, right. So that number is included in these numbers from D E W and Triumph, but that could be something that we need to be aware of for fluctuation.
And just to, the first one, so, um, controlled access is very important in schools, meaning no one gets into school unless they get approved, buzzed in and assessed for. And that's one of the things I really struggle with the current, um, portables, that it is possible, and I said this at the P T A night, that I have had an experience where due to a custody issue, there was a, a youngster that was, went missing in a school that I was, I was superintendent of. And without controlled access, it is conceivable that someone could walk right to a portable and, and take, and have a youngster. So, um, for the next, if this is a twenty-year endeavor, I don't think the Amherst community, um, would really have another twenty years without controlled access for people to our kids. And, and so we, we, I've been calling it a tunnel and it doesn't mean we have to dig down, even though I don't mind that idea. Um, but to create a, a real air, you know, kids walk um, in it. So you can't get to the portables unless you come through the main school. On that, and that's what people are doing. That's happening now in portables where you are building that connection. So we have controlled access. Um, so it's just something to think about as you're doing that too, because I think that's a basic level of security for our kids right now is controlled access.
And I think in any project that involves portables, we're talking a twenty-year lifespan anyway. So you're, you're going to want something, you can't put a tent up there with vinyl sides and have that as a tunnel like you do for the president when they get out of a car or something. So I think it's got to be a an actual structure that's, that's built to, you know, typical construction standards.
So tying into what you just said, you're talking about a twenty-year solution, right? If, if portables are the way that it goes. Um, and something that we've found is that if we don't save over time for portables, then in twenty years, the district of the town will find ourselves in a similar situation where we would need to have some type of future plan, um, of what to do. So that will also be something that needs to come into consideration is if there would be some type of savings plan or the best route to go.
Okay. Any other questions for Victoria on this?
So I know last time we had looked at, um, portables as a necessity, being able to get them was a real issue. Has supply magically gotten better?
I do not believe supply has magically gotten better. Um, however, I also do not have a firm answer on that, and that will be discussed at that Building and Grounds meeting. We haven't, other than receiving this document and talking very high level, we haven't really dug into those details with.
So I, I think it'd just be something to ask as what would the lead time be on being able to physically receive if we had to go in that direction?
Yep. Great question.
And I also think it's worth mentioning that this is not, you know, if, if the main building project fails on Tuesday, we're not starting to implement this plan on Wednesday per se. This is just the most readily accessible, easily attainable plan. Uh, obviously that involves a lot further discussions for any number of options. Um, but this is just the one that's most easily, um, attainable. Uh, where we get the quickest numbers and it's the quickest solution to any sort of, um, facility project that needs to take place to accommodate space and, um, doesn't accommodate aging structures, but at least it accommodates space restrictions.
But that's what I was just going to mention. So what, what this does, um, from a building and grounds perspective, when we go back to the J F A C work and the master planning work with La Valley Brenzinger, we had three options. We had our option um, to renovate Clark, renovate Wilkins and use portables. That's what this is part of. Then we had option number two, which was to renovate, renovate and add a small addition. And then we had option three, which was to build new. Um, with those two, with the renovate, renovate, add and build new being less than three percent apart, the Building and Grounds group has focused on making sure that the work is ready for the day after voting so that there is information for this board to be able to, to digest and figure out where to move forward and what our options are. Um, and that would be one of the options.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Victoria? Okay, I'll let you pull up the other presentation, Steve, if you'd like. So I, I'll get this conversation started as Steve pulls up the, the slide. This has been a, an ongoing topic of conversation since J F A C formed in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen timeframe. Is there a way to potentially accommodate A S D, um, in the annex? Uh, we have a ten-page slide presentation. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. Uh, it is part of the agenda. It's available on the website with our agenda, or at least we'll make it available um, with the agenda and with the minutes and everything from, from this meeting and the April meeting. But essentially, you know, we have looked at, um, a different, a bunch of different options for South Heagan. Um, you know, most recently we discussed this as part of the, uh, was it Victoria, the A S B meeting or was it the S A U meeting? I thought it was, it was the S A U meeting, correct? We did discuss.
It was October twentieth of twenty twenty-two that we discussed at the Amherst School Board meeting.
Okay. I feel, we did discuss it in S A U meeting as well.
That was also, that was.
Okay.
Just prior to that meeting.
So at the S A U meeting, we, we, we talked about it, South Heagan, um, board members was there and that was right after a South Heagan facility study was done. Um, you know, analyzing if we moved all the kids inside of the high school building, what would that, um, look like in terms of getting grade seven and eight over to the annex? We had a lengthy conversation that night. We had a conversation the next night at the board meeting. Combined with a, a variety of studies that were done, uh, as far back as two thousand nineteen on this. Um, Stephen, actually, if you want to go to the, to the next slide as well, I, I will go through part of it and maybe I'll end up going through the whole thing, but uh, the reconfiguration committee report there, that is on the Amherst, on the S A U website. Uh, if you go to S A U website and then there's a, a subcommittee page. Um, and that report is available there. It's the reconfiguration committee. It's the third one under that list under committees. So this just talks through the pros and cons of trying to consolidate Amherst and Mont Vernon into one school district, whether it was K through twelve, if it was five or six through twelve. And the pros and cons that went into that, and part of that was the building usage. So we have talked about, okay, let's move all the kids inside of South Heagan. Uh, you do that, all of a sudden you're looking at ninety-two percent capacity in that building, and then that's where your facility starts to dictate curriculum with the space that you have. So to accommodate that, we would have to, uh, likely do a construction project at South Heagan High School. It's debatable whether the annex would be big enough to house all of the, um, you know, the two grades that we would need there, especially with our fourth grade class that's approaching two hundred kids as it stands right now. Um, and then future enrollment potential growth as well, would the annex be too small? And then what do you do for core space over at South Heagan for core space and schedule? Because you're trying to get two more grades into the lunchroom, two more grades into the cafeteria, and does that increase the, the size and the scope of a construction project over there? And then there are myriad difficulties in terms of merging, uh, seventh and eighth grade, uh, with teaching, with teachers over there, you know, what teachers move over there? Are they part of the cooperative? Are they part of A M S? Uh, are you operating four buildings for Amherst School District at that point? Do you go down to three? Um, and then you still don't solve the problem of aging facilities. And then lastly, we talked about, um, extensively was what is best for kids and is a seventh, eighth grade environment in the annex? What's best for kids? Are they better off as part of the cooperative high school, uh, environment? Is it better off as part of a middle school environment? And then what, what do they lose? Uh, when they're, you know, when they're taken out of that middle school environment and they're put in limbo and sort of their own little world in the annex building. So a lot of conversations about this. Uh, I will let Steve, uh, add his piece in there in terms of what's appropriate for kids and, and the development of kids and the educational opportunities go on this. And then I'll open it up for the board for further comments on this, but it is something that we have studied. Um, and, and I think it's important to highlight that no matter what we do in, in the South Heagan board, um, when we talked about it at the S A U meeting, touched upon this, uh, construction would have to be done regardless at one of these buildings, no matter where we move these kids, because we just don't have the space to offer all the classes that we want in the high school if it's at ninety-two or ninety-six percent capacity. So with that, I will let you go, Steve.
Sure. And, and just a, a couple of pieces. So I was a, a principal of this, a, a middle and high school, seven through twelve school. It was about four hundred kids and, uh, the, having the seven through twelve built an economy, a scale that provided programs for both the middle school and secondary school that couldn't have been replicated without each other. Um, what we're talking about here is moving to, you know, if it's two grades, we're talking moving to a thousand, you know, a thousand kids, the seven through twelve. And, and just so middle school and the Amherst, but I've worked with Kristen. It, it's the middle school philosophy is exposure to as much program as you can, world language, unified arts, as much experience as you can. And so the program is necessarily diverse, uh, because that's developmentally appropriate. We want middle school kids to try as many things. And the concern would be if you take people from the core area of a middle school, then that would restrict the program. And a true middle school. And a true middle school is we want those kids to get exposed to arts and technology and and movement and music and all that. And it's right now, it is is structured that way. Um, and and those, South Heagan has those pieces, adding two grade levels would constrict the use of those and whether or not it is, you know, it's it's possible under under the current configuration to get that done. At this, at the high school level, the magic for kids is developing a master schedule that personalizes opportunities and grants as many first choice opportunities. So the students can personalize. So they've been exposed to everything in the middle school. Now we personalize and specialize into what their interests are. And a facility with the space here, um, that allows for a schedule to be built, not based on room availability, but student interest. And the concern is if we constrict with taking up lots of classrooms, we're going to all of a sudden, and that happened in the school that I came from, where because of enrollment, because of program, the master schedule was built on room availability, not student choice. And that is my biggest concern, that we restrict the middle school program, so we don't give the students the exposure to what they what they want and need. In the high school, all of a sudden, the room availability is driving student schedule and not student interest and passion and choice. So that's my overall philosophy of concern. Now, I am not like, and so if something happens Tuesday and we're we're meeting as a board and we're trying to go in a different direction. If you asked me what programs could move to the high school, the trend right now, what I've seen work effectively, believe it or not, is preschool. The preschool program could move because that is a very self-contained program, and and there is a trend in secondary schools taking preschool. And I think two or three classrooms, because that is, um, and actually, there's been some success, the early childhood program where kids come down and they experience. So I am not averse, if we have to, to look at it. I'd much rather preschool next to kindergarten and have all those related services. But if there's something we have to do as out of necessity because of things, I'm not, I, there is, there is some avail, maybe some availability now. Would, how would three classrooms impact South Heagan? That's that's something we can talk about. Obviously, that's not going to satisfy all the building needs, but I I just want to show, I'm not anti-looking at different configurations if we need to. But the middle school moving to the high school, which I think until you, and and Tom and I've talked about, are you going to build? Are you going to build duplicate gyms? Are you going to build more art rooms? Are you going to build those spaces? Then there's a whole another cost component. But if you're just using the standalone core core facilities here and adding two middle school grades, I worry about the pressure to provide as much exposure to program here without significantly impacting the high school master schedule, which is based on student interest. Does that make sense? I don't know if I was clear.
No, you were. And and again, this goes back to some of the additional costs that are involved in something like this. Steve mentions, let's say you move two grades over to the annex. They're part of that high school environment. Whether they're in the high school as part of the cooperative or if they're still part of Amherst School District, uh, you still have to have all the core spaces for those kids. So they have to be able to take gym classes. Do you have enough uh, in the schedule right now at South Heagan to incorporate two more grades of of gym classes? If you don't, you have to get the space for that, because you're not going to have them go over to A M S and do gym. That's a stupid waste of time, ten minutes back and forth on on the daily basis. What about art teachers? You have a couple of art teachers at South Heagan now. Do you need to get another art teacher for seventh and eighth grade? Do you, does that mean you take away one art teacher from Clark Wilk or from the Amherst Middle School? Can that one teacher now do three grades over there? Potentially, one teacher does four grades in in uh Wilkins right now. But then you start to say, all right, well, we're adding staffing to this on top of, you know, adding building needs as well. And then again, it goes back to how many buildings is this district going to? Um, are we going to become the largest property owners in in the town at this rate? If we continue to do this, we have, you know, four campuses essentially uh administrators. Do they go back and forth? You have to hire an extra administrator at South Heagan now to to go on the seventh and eighth grade level. So it's it's not as easy as just saying, yeah, let's pull all the kids inside. We'll put all the uh seventh and eighth graders in the annex and and there we go. Uh, and these conversations, again, have gone back to twenty twenty. We had a master planning study done. And at the time, the South Heagan Board didn't want to give up that space long term because they knew that they were going to need it somewhere else. So if you give up the annex, um, you know, you let your friend borrow your car, it's great, but how are you going to get around? You go buy a new car. Is that really a smart thing to to do? So I don't, I don't know that that's um the smartest thing financially for anybody. So again, just things that we've discussed, but I've uh been on the soapbox long enough about it. Somebody else want to share thoughts? It's not been ignored. It's not been a a solution that we've just poo-pooed for lack of desire. It's it's not something that we've determined makes sense.
I would like us to look more into, if not bringing it all day, bringing some of our younger students over to maybe have a program here that lets some of our students interested in education and in early childhood education, maybe have an after-school program. We bust them over and we do after-school program. I know that's something that Merrimack did very successfully, that they were able to have um high school students come and and be kind of hands-on. And my daughter was able to get a scholarship when she went to college because she'd spent that time working in that program. And she was really able to see, is this for me, working directly with young kids, is it not? So I would love to see it as an extended opportunity and maybe as an opportunity for our parents as well, as as something that we provide for them. So I love looking at the flexibility of something like that. Um, whether or not we use the annex for other things, I would love to explore that kind of program, and that's another reason I'm excited to have both of you back at full force and doing the whole reason that we wanted to have two assistant superintendents so that we can look at that kind of, um, you know, that kind of creative programming. So I would say, um, yes, please, I'd love to hear more about that, um, no matter what the rest of this happens.
Any other thoughts? Okay, so uh, two things left on the regular part of the agenda. I will uh turn it over to Steve. And and the introduction to this one is is pretty simple. We are at, for the first time, I think, since I've been on the board, maybe my first year. Trying to think, I know I don't think so. I think my first, end of my first year is when they had the uh the end of COVID. So I think that was, um, there were no such thing as snow days and makeup days at that point. But for the first time since I've been on the board, and I don't know how long it's been since we hit it, we've actually hit our five snow days uh, that are not made up at the end of the year. So I think it's safe to say at this point, we have to make contingency plans to make sure that any future snow days, uh, God forbid, we have more in March or April, um, or or flood days or any other days where we don't have school are going to be made up at the end of the year now, because we're at that um hours threshold where we have to start making them up.
You know, exactly. And that was, that was just um to just talk about it, that we have reached our threshold. Um, and so from here on, if we do have days, we'll be experiencing the makeup piece and and I'll communicate that uh with the community, just to make sure that they're aware now if we have a day planned on, you know, another day extending the school year. Um, it's, it's.
Can you refresh my memory? What's the final day now?
June eighth.
It ends, it it's at the end of a week. It's not a Monday, correct? Thursday, there we go.
June eighth, so if we have snow days or other days, we will go.
Okay. Uh, last thing, Steve, I will turn it over to you. We have some staffing. It's uh that time of the year where we get to look at contracts for next year and planning for F Y twenty-four.
No, I appreciate it. And this is a a a bit, you know, a hugely important, impactful uh board meeting in which we, um, the superintendent will, in terms superintendent, will present a slate, uh, we'll talk about those and then uh approve those um, uh, for contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, just a couple of things, uh, one thing, this is one of the few things um that a certified superintendent has to do, is put a name in nomination, like. Um, board members cannot put a name in nomination. So if, and and so if you didn't like a nomination, Steve, no, we decided to put somebody else in nomination, that doesn't work. So a certified superintendent has to put the names in nomination, and then the board uh elects those. So just a little bit about the process. So this is the culmination of a um year, well, three quarters of a year's worth of evaluation, observation discussions. And and the way it works in the Amherst School District is we have two different types of observations, one of which is the informal. It it's a a unannounced walkthrough. Um, so and based on where you are in your experience, you can have more of more or fewer. Um, so if you're a new staff member, um, then you have more unannounced walkthroughs as well as what we call a formal, and a formal is considered clinical, where you have a pre-observation meeting. You have the observation, you have a post-observation meeting. So all our administrators, and they provided regular updates with the number of those throughout the year and and board reports. That, um, and this year, um, in in, well, I've asked and received and appreciated the effort by both Kathleen and Kristen, that one of the most significant decisions we make are those who have continuing contract. And I wrote about that in the memo, and there's two different paths to continuing contract. If you received the continuing contract status in the past, then the new, the second district, um, for example, when I was, I was at Hollis Brookline for eleven years, if I was a teacher, I went to Hopton to be a teacher, because I had had continuing contract, that district would have three years to evaluate my fit for the district. But Hollis Brookline, because that was my first job, they had now would have five years to evaluate my fit for that district. You with me? One is three and one is five. And so we have had um individual meetings with our administrators, with Meg, Christine, our principals, and we have reviewed every single staff member that is on the cusp of this decision. And this year, I have asked both Kathleen and Kristen to um write a uh detailed memo to me profiling each of one of those teachers who is uh on the cusp, if you will, of a continuing contract status. So I can be as prepared as I can for what I think is one of the most impactful decisions. Um, I think I said it earlier today, uh, super, and I, Mike and I have talked about this, when I went from the building to the superintendent role, the notion about twenty to twenty-five year decisions comes into play. Uh, I hope and expect and want that the teachers that we are granting continuing contract, I hope that these are twenty, twenty-five year decisions. Um, and so it's a very impactful decision. And and so from here, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process, but it's been evaluation, it's been meetings, it's been written documentation. We talk about those in non-public. We come out and uh we vote the slate. And but uh obviously, any specific questions that we go into non-public, we can talk about those, but the process is whole game. Um, and I do hope next year we'll continually evolve our educator effectiveness work, our teacher evaluation process um, as it continued develops since I've been here and and build on Christine's work for me.
I don't know if you can answer this. It's somewhat specific, but not to individual personnel, but do we know the number of teachers that were up for continuing contract consideration this year?
Yeah, uh, ten percent of our workforce, about fourteen people. That's a lot.
Is that average or is that a, it's a high number?
Yeah, that's high. Um, um, so it's very, it's a huge, it's important. But we have about a hundred and forty teachers, so it's about ten percent, I mean, ish. Amy doesn't like it, but I live in the ish.
And and when do teachers have to accept by? So this, I apologize.
No, um, so by statute, we have to um provide either a contract or notice uh of not renewal by April fifteenth.
Okay.
And then I believe it's twenty days from the time they get the contract uh to respond. And what's uh funky about this year, which uh which gives Amy, Christine, me and Amina Agita, is that we are doing this without an approved budget. That's not how it's supposed to work. Right? Because we were, we were supposed to have the vote, have this meeting, and we'd be fine. Um, so um, in in like one of our districts, we had positions that weren't in their fault. So because we were doing that before the vote, we did not award contracts to any position that's not in the default. So tonight, just for your edification, all the positions that we are uh going to the slate tonight are in the default. Um, and because otherwise, there's really no assurance um that, and once we nominate and and award a contract, it is a commitment to their fam, right, to their families. And so, um, and so there is, there is uh positions tonight. There isn't any position we're offering tonight that's not the default.
So if the budget passes on Tuesday, do we have to have another meeting to offer contracts for those positions that are not in the default? Or do we just, does that just give you permission to post and search for those openings?
Correct. No, for all, all the nominations tonight, um, fill our slate. One of our districts, so we do have to come back. And because there's two positions that we would have for the fifteen, but in this district, um, they are all, we are ready to nominate all, everyone else's new hires.
Well, we're adding a kindergarten teacher, so that would be.
Right, but we haven't, we haven't posted hired that yet.
Okay, so it's just, okay, gotcha. No, no, I understand that, but I'm saying if we, if the budget gets approved, obviously, we have a kindergarten teacher opening. Is there no plan to potentially fill that internally? You can bring that to us in April, essentially, if you need to?
Correct. Once we give a contract, we can transfer people.
Okay.
Um, the transfer is not a problem.
The new positions are not included.
No, no, I I I'm getting, I I understand that, but when the new positions pass, if they pass on Tuesday, we're going to have X number of new positions that we need to fill. Is the plan to be able to do that with internal staff? But it sounds like as long as they have a contract offered to them, you can transfer teacher A from first grade to kindergarten, because that's where you want to put them anyway, but you just can't do that until, and then you would either post the kindergarten position or you post the position that's being vacated by the new kindergarten teacher.
Right.
Okay. But that can all be done at the April meeting if we need to. So that's the reason that we're not going to wait for a meeting after the budget, because we can do everything else tonight and then.
Yep.
But in full transparency, um, we do have a new hire um, position that we're hiring someone new for twenty-three, twenty-four, but that position is in the default. And the reason, we've started, and so it's a very, very competitive environment, like tomorrow, assuming all goes well, I will be notifying that teacher that they approved because um she has two interviews and is waiting for offers from two other. She probably will not accept our offer until the results of Tuesday. Because it's not, as Tom talked about in the video today, the impact of the teacher's contract is not significant, but I told her that I would notify her after the nomination, and she was supposed to know the the contract passed to her, but we don't. Um, but she really wants to work with us. We'll talk about that. But that position, it is secure because it is, that position's in the default. You with me? So we can do that. Um, but we're going to talk about that. So obviously, the specifics about person on public, that's what we do. Um, but it is funky for me. It's been funky for me to do this three to Amy and Christine and Amina and the leadership to do this without a budget. It's the first time outside of the COVID year that a lot of people had that I've ever done this. Um, but um, we're, and that's, I mean, obviously, because it's a vote after the annual meeting, the default exists, so we're comfortable. All these positions are in the default, but I can't look you all in the eye and say that some of the open positions are going to be funded if we're in default because we have to reclaim funds to support transportation and the cost of chicken nuggets in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-two funding. Had to get that in.
Glad you did. Thank you.
You're not glad of it, I can tell.
So again, elections have consequences, as they say, and and I am concerned with the number of contracts that may be in jeopardy or maybe turned down if if Tuesday doesn't pass. It's probably not as much as we think. Um, and being pessimistic about it, but in that year one through four, uh, I do have concerns for accepting contracts. Uh, beyond that, I don't think it's as big a deal if you're uh continuing contract already. It's it's probably not as big a, big a hit, but if you're in year one, especially if you're in those first two or three years, it's going to be impactful if uh the contract doesn't pass on Tuesday. So we shall see what comes out on the wash.
And last, and it's a, it's a different world in my, uh, this is my twenty-second year, twenty-third, fourth year in leadership. I say this before. Many years, I wouldn't get an interview if I, if I went after a math job, because I'm top top. I'd get an interview. I'd get a job right now. Because of the, of the scarcity of a, a number of positions open, because I'm still a certified math teacher out there, no, I'm just kidding. Um, because I still have a cer, I'm a certified math teacher. Um, I do believe for the last two, last year and this year, I do believe I could get a job. Um, and in the past, yeah, my experience would have priced my, you know, you with me, would have priced me out of the market. So it is different. So people, every teacher can move now. And that's not always been true, based on the economy and based on the number of teachers. You know, we're not getting many math teachers out of our state school. You know what I mean? Anyway, but yeah, Tuesday's big day.
Well, we were at our meeting earlier. So Steve and I both serve on the R sec board, and they, they had nominations as well, and there were positions that have been open all year. They haven't been able to fill. And there were, we were able to find um psychologists to go there, and the other districts were like, where? Where did you find one? Because we have had three openings in Milford for school psychology. I mean, there are just, there's a scarcity of staff everywhere. And so i- it's not a scare tactic, it's not, it just is reality.
All right, before we open up our final public comment, and I I do want to take a minute, uh, this is the the final, final, final meeting uh for Josh Conklin as a member of Amherst School Board. Uh, I don't think we can actually get legally a meeting in between now and Tuesday. Um, so Josh, we, we had a gift uh made up for you. Steve, would you like to present it to him? I'll, I'll let you pass it down there. Um, so thank you. I know that this last year in particular, your, your work will be felt hopefully in this district for a long time, but um, you know, I can't believe it's been three years. We were talking about that, and I said, I'm pretty sure it's two, Josh. It's only two years, but that first year was all COVID. Uh, so I don't think we saw each other face to face in person for probably a good first eight or nine meetings of that uh of that school year. So um, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you for the work, but especially this year, superintendent and with um, you know, the the teacher contracts, it's, it's been a lot of work for you, and uh I know that it's been much appreciated by me. Uh, the support that you provided me with some of this stuff, but as a, as a board and for our community as well, and and we know you're not going anywhere, but but thank you again, and and uh it's been, it's been fun three years working with you and getting to know you on the board.
All uh, all board members.
Sarah, we're not ignoring you, we're just being, it's, it's Tuesday.
Thank you.
Best of luck on, on Tuesday night. Uh, so with that, all right, let's open it up for our final uh bit of public comment. We will open it up for the folks in person first. Uh, I do see a hand raised on the screen, uh, so I will open it up. If anybody would like to speak, please come in the microphone, say your name and your town of residence, and then you will have three minutes to go. Is my call, John? I think it is. There. No, the power's on, just, it's muted.
There you go.
Great.
When you are ready.
I'm John Glover in Amherst. Steve, could you pull up the agenda stuff, just a couple of things I wanted to point out?
The packet or slides?
The agenda packet. In fact, it's page PDF page eighty-six. So I feel like back in the old days, when I was on Ways and Means coming to Amherst School Board meetings, listening to your meetings, taking my notes and providing some feedback, so that's what I'm doing here. First off, and most of this is, has a common theme to it, but it just occurred to me that one of the solutions to the right to know request for Ways and Means could be to discuss the, with the requester, what it is that they're looking for. If they're asking for everything produced, that's going to take a long time and cost more money. I mean, Ways and Means met eighteen times, I think, over the course of their, just more times than the school board meets. So, and the fact that they have a lot of emails shows that they were collaborating, I mean, this is, I think, a healthy, so there's a lot there. I presume as a result of that, and it's going to take some time. If the person who made the request has something specific that can focus the request, then that would help save time and money. All right.
Is this the page?
Yes, scroll down a little bit. Yeah, that piece there. Okay. On the, on the assessment part of your discussion, I, I think Terry was right when she said college is not right for everyone. I think that, that maybe that's true, or maybe that's not true, I don't know that that's really our goal. Seems to me that our number one job is to produce the best student, the best academic achievement that they're capable of achieving for themselves, so that regardless of their path, they can read well, they can write well, and meet the high expectations of the community, which is to outperform national averages and so on and so forth. If we do that for every student, then whatever path they, they take, if they're a carpenter and they can read well, and they can do math well, they're going to be a great carpenter, or a great entrepreneur, or a great military officer, or unlisted person, or on down the line, or a college student. On the assessment plan, the draft plan, Steve, a couple of comments. I like the idea of adding more, like what you said. The local assessment piece could be a little bit tricky, just because of the integrity issue. I don't know what kind of quality controls you put in there so that the data that comes out of that is credible. Not torment anyone hiding the ball, but an assess, you know, the assessors touting the success of their students is an inherent conflict, so I don't know what the solution is, it's just a mind, that's a mind, a mind, a landmine there. I think what's missing from your metrics is something that you've been talking about pretty much since the day you got here, which was instructional time and instructional effectiveness. You know, effectiveness in the classroom, and I know from your preliminary reviews, hundreds of observations, you saw some, should say, some areas of, that could be improved along that. And so the evaluations, the informal evaluation process, or maybe all the way through the formal evaluation process could be a metric, maybe should be. In addition to teacher health, it's also kind of what they're paid to do.
You are at three minutes, John, so I'll give you another thirty seconds, that's good.
Okay.
So I do have somebody that wants to go, I mean.
No problem, I can.
More welcome to come back up after.
Let me finish that thought, and then I'll come back up with my remaining comments. I, I worry a little bit about the changing of curriculum as a solution. I mean, we've got ten years of kind of declining performance, roughly ten years, and we've, we've changed curriculum over that time period, and it hasn't really resulted, and I'll just close with this, this is why I wanted this slide up. It wasn't really talked about, but this dropped from fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, and it takes until tenth grade to come back up from this precipitous declines. So what we're doing here is we're robbing our, our freshmen the year when they have their, their permanent record begins of a quarter of their high school experience to shine with, with these, with this type of performance. And I think the conversation about using the annex ties into this. And I'll have some comments about that later, and I'll, wanting to refer back to that again, Steve, thanks.
Thank you. Kelly Schmidt, I will give you the chance here, if you'd like to turn on your camera, if you still wanted to speak, turn on your camera, and I'll let you know when you can go. Yep, we're going to promote you to panelist first, Kelly. And then you can just turn your camera on, say your name and town of residence, and then you will have three minutes. Chill, that's Steve. There, when you're ready, Kelly, you're all set.
Okay, you can hear me and see me?
We can.
Great, hi, so Kelly Schmidt, Amherst, eleven Patricia Lane. I definitely wanted to comment on the, you know, first major discussion you had, which was on the Ways and Means request for funding for council. It's, it's, I know you discussed it, but it's still relatively unclear to me exactly what they're looking for funding regarding, you know, my personal speculation is that they're finding themselves in a kind of challenging environment with commentary from social media, and that kind of has spurred a lot of the right to know questions, and maybe the, the exact one. And they, part of the challenge has come from the manner in which, you know, they have chosen to proceed and continue to proceed in this year. It, I just want to say it's that it's not lost on me that the, there was a discussion in Ways and Means with the mostly current body of Ways and Means at the beginning of the gathering of this year, there's always, it always takes a little bit of time for a few people to come in and out at the, at the beginning. And at the time, you know, they were advised by a fellow committee member about what, you know, the thought of the scope of the group was, and it was dismissed. And they decided to follow their own agenda now, and it's kind of not lost on me that, that they're now worried about some of the, you know, personal fallout, and that is now falling, you know, on the responsibility of it being the board to support, despite the fact that they didn't want much input from the board and considered themselves an independent entity in terms of, you know, what they talk about as their, their responsibility and where their responsibility comes from. You know, I wanted to remind the board as that member of the committee at the time that was, you know, in dispute with them on, on what their scope was, I'm, I'm now a, you know, former member of the committee of kind of two main things. First, that, that you guys discussed, oh, you know, it's mostly a, a, a new committee. There are in fact, members on the committee who have been committee members for quite a few years. You know, while the chair and some of the other members are indeed new, it, you know, it was discussed for quite a bit of time, as recently as last year, what would have been advisable for taking proper, you know, meeting disclosure requirements were, and you know, we even last year, you know, sought a question to counsel on a, a few pieces there, so it's kind of boggles my mind that, you know, the committee members are now claiming, you know, they're not sure, they don't know, when it's not that they're all net new, there is information there within the committee themselves of what could have been followed that necess, wasn't necessarily, I don't know, you know, but there were practices that were put in place last year that they were familiar with, and it was highly discussed, and it's not necessarily having come this year, and you know, I know you guys are, they're what is it, kind of the backer in that they are independent in some ways, so it is on them, it's just frustrating for to hear that, oh, they're new, they don't know. That's, that's not entirely true.
But I give you, I give you thirty seconds more, Kelly.
Okay, my second point is just also that, you know, as chair last year, I had informally requested of certain individual, you know, board members to look into and reconfirm exactly what Ways and Means charter was. You know, never went into it in, you know, any formal manner, but you know, I would, I was looking for the board to kind of potentially discuss exactly what, you know, Ways and Means scope should be, and to get guidance on that, it, it didn't happen because it wasn't, you know, seen as a big concern, and I think we're, what we're seeing is that, you know, myself and, you know, those, you know, were around last year is an extremely different outcome than we might have expected, and there's a little bit of frustration, at least on my part, that that wasn't done, so I would like to kind of formally request of the board taking, you know, a deep dive and speaking about it in public at a board meeting exactly where Ways and Means, you know, what the thought of Ways and Means as a committee is, regardless of who was elected moderator. You know, that, that to me, it, it didn't matter to me who the moderator was last year for having that discussion, it doesn't matter to me who, who, who gets elected as moderator coming up, I would like that to be a discussion, so I'm just requesting of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else for a public comment for the first time tonight? Greg?
Hey guys, Greg Fritz, Amherst. Missed the beginning on the things with, with the fourth grade show tonight over at at Wilkins, and it was, at least the first, the first one I was at was really well done, and there was more parents and, and visitors and neighbors than there were chairs, so it was, it was exciting giving in the back. But I did catch your facilities portion, that's when I kind of came in. And I'm glad I, I saw some of that, I think I saw one point five million on the number you zoomed in on, I think it's per portable, is that? One point five was to replace the two, the two buildings that are there now, and then it was two point, one point eight, two point five, it was. Oh, okay, one point five is just to replace the four classrooms we have now, okay. And then it was two point eight to add six additional classrooms, three buildings. Two point eight to add six classrooms, got it, okay, so that would, that would be ten classrooms would be in in portables, if that was the option exercise, okay, it would cost four point three million. Plus whatever other contingencies that were on there, I think it was the foundation costs that were increased, Victoria, we didn't know what those were going to be, and some of those other, the sinking. The white, the yellow, yeah, okay. Okay, cool, thanks, so that helps a lot, so something four point three plus, you know, maybe about six million, something like that, and that is that, when you did that analysis, Victoria Roger, whoever did that, was that the same size that you would need to house the students you're projecting for some similar period as the building you're proposing on the warrant, or is that a different total size?
So Tom, I don't know how much you want me to go back and forth, but this is based on the programming, it's based on the Banwell programming.
Okay.
And, and I mentioned that in, in the initial, and then, which I know, I'm not sure exactly when you came in.
But it's not moving fifth grade down, it's strictly leaving the, the students in the buildings they're in now, just making more room for them in those buildings. Okay, that helps me.
And these are only talking about the programming needs at Wilkins. This is not talking about the programming needs, the additional space needs at Clark and at AMS. Which are an additional like three and six or something like that.
Plus you have thirty million in the boiler HVAC, and then the next three, four years, whatever that was too, so the total cost here is, it's, have to figure out later, but it's in the forty million range ish, sounds like, and just to be clear, that that plan also keeps the kindergarten pre-K at Clark, right? Everything stays status, everything's up there, okay, thanks a lot, okay, cool. I just want to comment on, on how I have left here on the you know, the portable is going to be badge accessed, and as I mentioned before, it's, it's a little confusing to understand how we're all for these outdoor classrooms, you know, including me, they clearly have no badge access, no controlled access. And it's not a problem, and then there's this giant reaction, negative reaction to the idea that portables, while they have badge access, they're not connected to the main building, that, that seems, that's another ongoing kind of question that I don't understand how that's being weighed by everybody else, because to me, I don't make sense of that. And that's a longer special, we'll talk later. And I just, I guess on the way, if I have time left, I don't know how much. Yeah, about a minute left. Okay, thanks, I guess I'm speaking faster than other nights. You know, the Ways and Means this year, we, we analyzed the data that you had provided, or, you know, come from administration or from the board. And things like the pay as you go option, I know it's talked about at some of the meetings that I wasn't, I wasn't invited to or attended. Those are kind of options we got from, again, the Banwell study is like, if we didn't fund this warrant twelve, for example, what would the total cost be? We said how we financed that, so that wasn't like, and we didn't endorse any plan in our facilities report, it was really an analysis of the options and data that we had gotten, so I just wanted to clarify how I saw that report and our, our role in Ways and Means. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else for the first time tonight, either at home or in person? Where'd my chat go, participants? When you are ready.
Laura Taylor, Amherst, New Hampshire. I want to say that I appreciate all the work of the Ways and Means Committee, I know they've gotten a lot of criticism, criticism online. And I think their attention to the quality of our school, which should matter to every Amherst citizen, and I know it matters to me. And I, I'm glad that they have brought attention to the fact that our test scores have been lacking and that we need to improve our quality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to address one brief thing. I just, so Greg? I, you, you brought up outdoor classrooms, and I would just like to clarify that outdoor classrooms are an extended opportunity that is a sometimes thing. It's kind of like saying you don't have cookies at every meal, right? You have it as a sometimes treat, as Cookie Monster would like to say. And so it's nice to have that as an extended opportunity, but it's not where we are expecting students to be as the majority of their day to be in. So having that as they go out to recess, recess is outside too, right? We're not going to stop recess. That's very, very different from having that be where your primary instruction is occurring a majority of the day, which is what the current portables are being used for, and what additional ones would also be used for, so I would just like to draw that differentiation there.
Anybody else for the first time tonight?
Muzi Husani, Amherst. For the first time, I've come to, I don't know, half a dozen of your meetings. I was very encouraged by the discussion in today's meeting. It was, people were looking at things seriously, they're concerned about the quality. And so I'm encouraged by that, thank you. Now, I have to ask a question of Ms. Schmidt, if I am allowed to.
Of, of who? Uh, yeah, I, I don't want to get back and forth going in with public comments, you can address, I'm sure Kelly can get in touch with you, if you guys want to have an offline conversation.
No, it should not be an offline conversation, it should be for public record. I'm brand new to this whole affair, right? So I asked what we needed to do. We wanted to look at the, the overall performance of the school, and whether the budget and expenses and output is aligned with our expectation and standards and reality. At a macro level, we saw so many disturbing factors that there was no point in going line by line. Me being an IT guy, I looked at the IT budget. It is grossly under budgeted, I even said that publicly. There are a lot of places. There are some structural issues that is going to require to be looked at hard and fixed, it's going to take time, change is difficult, but as long as we have honest conversations and acknowledge there are issues, then we can see the, the light at the end of the tunnel. And that's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Thank you, Muzi. All right, anybody else for the first time tonight? All right, John, if you'd like to go ahead.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John Glover and Amherst. Um. Okay, where was I? Um, oh, thanks, Steve. Right, just go back where I was. So what I noticed in this is from fifth grade, which is when the test changes, they seem to be doing all right. It's a steady decline in both reading and math. There's this anomaly in seventh grade. This slope is consistent with what I've seen in newer data since I've been paying attention for, uh, eight years. Um. And I, I don't know that curriculum was, is the solution. I think what Steve was talking about effectiveness in the classroom and investing in, in instructional time could yield, now, a lot of positive results. And we get the teachers focused on their performance in the classroom as opposed to, say, learning how to implement a new curriculum, which might take their focus away from their students. We might get a better bang for, for our, our buck. Um. All of this to say, uh, the spike upward that we see in 10th grade, I think we do a disservice to our, our, our freshmen. And, um, you know, it is not easy for the South Hegan Cooperative School Board or School District to share resources with the Amherst School District because of the hard district lines. The, the budgeting is different, sharing resources, sharing labor, sharing knowledge, sharing re, is, is nigh impossible. Um, this is why I think for the student benefit, um, looking at the annex as an option was good for students. I've heard a lot of reasons why we shouldn't do it. Um, but that, an ability, we've heard from teachers and domain leaders, that vertical integration is very important. The reason why Steve Chamberlain was hired in the first place was to help us bridge our problem of transitioning from the middle school to the high school. A solution whereby seventh and eighth grade comes into the cooperative would give those resources, two years to prepare them for their permanent record. That's a huge benefit to students. Now, I hear Steve's concerns about programming diversity and exposure for the seventh and eighth grades and room availability for first choice options for the high school students. I hear you, I hear you. I do not think that, um, using our educational space that we have fundamentally is flawed. This is my personal opinion. This is why I think the, the conversation needs to go forward. Um, 92% of the main building is not what the capacity would be. That is, um, comes from the Gale Report, okay? That has a self fulfilling prophecy when they determine how big, how many students can be in the room. A decision was made that there are no more than 20 students are going to be in those rooms, any room, at any grade level. That's unrealistic. I mean, your own guidance for seventh and eighth grade is 20 to 24. So if we're going to artificially force the lowest possible and say we don't have any space, a, and, and say we need to spend $100 million with interest, um, to, to, and to not look at that seriously, is, is, um, frustrating, let's say, to me. If you look at the room capacity by square footage and you account for what the Department of Education guidelines are for square feet per student, at seventh and eighth grade, it's 32 feet, square feet, or, uh, sorry, it's 36 square feet per student, and in the high school, it's 32 square feet. That would take, the Gale Report's capacity of the annex from 374 students up to 560 students. It's about 50% increase in capacity, just based on room size. And then you can, you can then, what we've done is we did the capacity based on a 24, a 22, and a maximum of 20 students per those classrooms. And for ninth through 12th grade, the, the, the percentages range from about 73 at the low to, uh, at a 24% capacity in FY 32, based on current enrollments, to a 93% in FY 28, based on the bubble that's coming, and a maximum capacity of 20 students. It says that there's capacity next year, that would be about 80% capacity based on existing room use. Seventh and eighth grade, the, the numbers range, the percentages range from 53% capacity to 68% capacity. Plenty of room to add the programming you were talking about for arts and education. There's plenty of space here to use larger rooms. Why do we know this? Because it was an analysis of the master schedule. These rooms are underutilized. Teachers get a room, but they're only teaching four classes a day. So how are the rooms being utilized? There's only one choir class a day, there's only one band class a day, if it's even every day. There's plenty of opportunity to find a solution if we're willing to sit down and say, geez, how could this help our current problem? Wilkins School is busting at the seams, nobody denies that. I, this helps buy us some time to rightsize our prob, our projects. It, it helps the students we have now, right now, not tomorrow, because it's going to take a, probably a year to implement. And it could start the, the school year after next, if we, if we really got our heads around this. And, and come back to the community when we need a facilities need with a right sized project and we're doing right by our students. These are some of the tenants, I'm going to go all the details because time is short and it's time to move on from this. But the fact that, um, the South Hegan study shows that, that this is feasible, um, e- enough, and that there's a compelling reason to, to help the students for the transition to high school. Um, for me, is, 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 I mean, imploring you to please come and knock on the South Hegan School Board's door and say, yes, we're ready to have the conversation together and see what solutions we can come up as opposed to excuses for avoiding it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments tonight?
Amy Hansen, 12 Cricket Corner. Um, one, I did not go to a traditional high school. Um, I went to a vocational high school and it was actually redistricted and reconfigured to be a nine through 12, or, um, a 10 through 12. So they moved ninth grade down developmentally. That was where it fit better, I have to say. I think in a broad picture, the thought of moving kids to the high school seemed interesting to me at the beginning, but there are lots of developmental and logistical moves that did not make sense. Um, and I have to say, I don't want my seventh grader in a high school. I just don't. Um, so there are a lot of things that, I, I don't even love that my seventh grader's on the bus with high school kids, to be honest with you. Um, so there are a lot of things that make me question that, and I'm glad that the board has done due diligence and Jay Back has done due diligence to research this. Um, and there is ample reasons why that exploration did not work out. Um, second thing I wanted to say is I was not here at the very beginning when you were talking about Ways and Means and, um, the right to know request. Um, and I do not know the scope of it. But I do have to say, I do hope for the future. I think this has definitely brought some concerns. I think one of the things I'm most concerned about is how do we go forward from here so that there's open communication with Ways and Means? I know myself, I went onto the school website multiple times a week to try to see if there was a meeting going on. Sometimes the meeting got canceled, sometimes it got changed. Um, I hope that there's a way that we can communicate that better so that I can like subscribe and I can follow. And there would be an email sent out, hey, there's going to be a Ways and Means meeting on this date at this time, so that the people who are interested in following that information can participate. Um, so I do hope that there is an avenue for that in this techno, technological world. I'm sure we can figure that out. Um, but I do think it is, it is kind of a dark alley area where people don't know what's going on at Ways and Means. They don't know when the meetings are, they don't know how to find the information. Um, so that's one thing about Ways and Means. The other thing is, I do know from the meetings I did attend, which was a handful of them, um, I do know that they were recorded. And I wonder if the recordings to help supplement the minutes, um, might be something that could give people a better idea of what actually was communicated at the meeting. Um, the minutes are a little bit, um, sparse. Um, and I think that might help people to see a better picture for meetings that are generally under-publicized and people just don't attend or don't know how to attend or don't know the topic. So I do hope there's a way we can communicate better and that there can be open communication with the district and the town, taxpayers, all the stakeholders.
Thank you, Amy. Yep, any other public comment tonight? Okay, so with that, before we go to non-public, I will let Steve say one thing.
Uh, just, uh, two things that I, um, neglected to cover during the staffing portion. Um, I would, um, just like to announce and, and offer the board the opportunity to accept with regret. Um, and I alluded to this, um, the resignation of John Berry, who's an Amherst Middle School Special Educator and Social Worker Kim Wyberney. I alluded to the number of staff, those are two of the stuff I just forgot to, to mention their names. If you can, I, I, both, I enjoyed, I, my 20 months had opportunity to work with both of them and appreciate, uh, their work with our kids. And if the board would accept the resignation with regret and appreciation for their work, I'd appreciate it.
I will take a motion, as Steve, uh, mentioned there, to accept the two resignations with regret.
I'll make that motion.
Jason with the motion. Take it a second. I have a second from Victoria. Uh, any other further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
One, two, three, four, five, none opposed. With that, I will take a motion to go into non-public tonight. Under RSA, I can't remember off the top of my head, bear with me while I look at it, uh, regarding a variety of topics tonight, uh, including 93A two, A and C, 93A2A and C. So I'll take that motion. I have a motion from Victoria, a second from Josh. Any roll call vote starting with Jason?
White, yes.
Grease, yes.
Conklin, yes.
Gothy, yes. And we are in non-public at 8:21. Thank you for coming tonight, everybody. Uh, and we will have votes that we have to do after the non-public is over.